Call to order the council subcommittee on the Country Club Road Conceptual Plan Revision. If you're joining remotely, please make sure that your first and last name are correctly displayed. Wait to be called down before speaking and keep your comments under three minutes. Are there any changes to the agenda? Seeing none, let's move to general business. Let me mention that this is a subcommittee of three members of the city council. Some members of the larger council are attending, can attend, and in fact are attending as members of the public. They'll be able to comment, but they will not be able to vote on any action or analysis that the the subcommittee makes.
Keep in mind that we're not hearing the House of Representatives.
I will, I will try to do that. Okay. General business, this is an opportunity for comments from the public about a topic that is not on today's agenda. Is there anyone in the room would like to comment? Seeing none, anyone online? Okay. Just want to talk a little bit about what we're expecting to do today. This subcommittee was formed around a number of concerns about the preferred concept plan or Concept A, as it appears in the Country Club Road Actionable Plan, including things like the boundary of the recreation and community zone, as well as limitations that this concept plan appears to set on permissible types of housing and their location. There might be other issues as well. We're meeting today to review the planning information and receive public comment that will ultimately lead us, the subcommittee, to make a recommendation to the full city council regarding possible revision of the concept plan for Country Club Road. The first 90 minutes or so will be devoted to three presentations. One from VHB reviewing the relevant elements of the original planning process that led up to the actionable plan. One on planning for the recreation area by the city's Community Services Department. And one presentation by the Planning Department regarding the relevant elements of the Growth Center Amendment application with an eye toward a future TIF application and ultimately an RFP to potential developer partners. Following that be an opportunity for public comment. We will then close public comment and begin a subcommittee work session during which we'll begin to discuss the potential revisions to the concept plan. And somewhere in there we'll have lunch. So with that, let's move to item five, which is a review of the project process and background. Mike, would you please introduce your team and begin? Thanks.
Good morning. Mike Willard, VHB, Lysic Architects.
Mark Hamlin, VHB, Lysic Architects.
So Mark was intimately involved with the original master planning effort for this project that sort of concluded back in 23. And we had sort of submitted the plans or they had sort of our process sort of ended. I think it was sometime around May of 23, and so that's as the report sits today. And so I can walk through what we have for the plan, so I will share my screen. So this first document is, yeah, I'll zoom in. But essentially what this is, is this is the existing conditions mapping that was prepared for the project. And so what we see on here is a culmination of a variety of natural resources. So I'll sort of just walk through to these green areas. Those were identified and mapped wetlands. And each of those wetlands has an associated buffer, so that's sort of that lighter color outside of that. Those are 50-foot buffers. There were streams that were identified, so those are those blue lines. Similarly to the wetlands, they also have regulatory requirements, so they also have 50-foot buffers associated with them. And so you can see them sort of sprinkled throughout the site. This brighter yellow color here that is identified as prime agricultural soils. There's sort of a legend at the bottom these correspond to. And then this hatched yellow area up above are identified as statewide soils. So all of these things, these natural resource elements start to create sort of a picture for the property about developable areas where you can start considering doing development impacts to the site, because everything has sort of regulatory restrictions associated with it. And so that was really the first step in evaluating the property and trying to understand what the development potential is for this site. And so that this was a key tool to sort of identifying where the opportunities are. We can get into specific details about each of those areas. And so then this is the sort of the buildable areas that were identified, essentially the pockets. So you can see what was being done is essentially avoiding the natural resource areas around the property. And so that was another step that was taken through the original process. Again, simply just saying, okay, here are developable areas based on slope, natural resources, buffers, setbacks. And through the original public process that transpired, that was led by White and Burke, this Concept A is one of three concepts that had been developed for the site. It's my understanding that this is the one that we're sort of discussing today. So just sort of to capture what's happening, so coming up Country Club Road, this concept was essentially saying this right-hand side of the property was being preserved for recreation, community zone. At the time, it was unclear whether or not the existing Country Club building would remain. So it was just identified as that was essentially the rec zone. And whether that facility remained or not was undetermined at the time. And then so from there, concepts were developed, looking at different housing types, density, and recognizing that sort of this lower end of the site, the grades are more favorable for larger footprint buildings. And so the study sort of moved forward, saying that there would be greater density in this sort of lower area of the site. And so that's why you see larger buildings, because larger footprints for these buildings are less adaptable to steeper slopes. And so as we start moving up into the site, that's the grade start to get a little bit steeper. So townhomes were identified in this concept up in that sort of higher elevation around the property, sort of broke up the density a little bit and sort of changed the housing mix and use. But again, sort of staying in that same idea of avoiding impacts to natural resources other than sort of stream crossings with the roads coming through.
And we pretty much followed the main layout of that road, follows the rules on zoning for steepness of roads allowed in the city. And you can see also the cross-city trail, the top coming across, and then our dashed pedestrian connections from these development areas to hook up to it.
One of the considerations, I'll go back to the main map here. So this yellow area being prime ag soils has regulatory requirements to it for impacts and mitigation. And so one of the ideas about preserving this right-hand side as deemed recreation is that that would have sort of the least impacts to prime ag soils and that that other development of the sort of higher density housing was off to this side. So it had sort of the least impact to that. And so through Act 250, that's the criteria 9B, prime ag soils. There are requirements for mitigation and offsets if you start impacting prime ag soils. So that was in play in this process. Through the the study itself, our team had done a preliminary traffic assessment. There was a prime ag soil memo that was issued. There was a natural resources assessment memo that was issued. So all of that sort of played into sort of looking at the site and understanding where development would be best suited based on these regulatory restrictions. This is simply Concept B, a little very similar to the other one. This one maintained the community recreation zone on the right. The higher density housing was sort of seen in that lower area, again, flat terrain, less impacts to prime ag soils, townhomes up high. And then this concept introduced single-family homes as one of the ideas. So again, just mix up the housing units and types that were being introduced to the project vision. And then Concept C was just a different take, a little bit larger building for higher density down here. And then just sort of change the impact townhomes, and we stayed out of this sort of upper zone over here.
Mike, do you mind if I ask questions or would you prefer to?
No, go ahead.
Fire away.
Can we go back to the previous Concept B just for a second?
Yeah.
On those single-family lots, what what's the average lot size for the, do you know, or was that envisioned?
I, I don't have the calc with me. I'm, I don't know right now.
Thanks. I'm, you know, I think, I think one of the things we want to think about is just like the opportunity for single-family housing up there. And like, what is the minimum lot size?
Yep.
And then, and maybe, sorry, and then I promise I'll be quiet, but like, maybe just like one more question of, Concept A is the, you know, the one, the preferred, you know, has been described as the preferred option. But like, how exactly, like, what was the process for that selection? Was that a council decision or community or what, where did, how did Concept A emerge as the preferred concept?
That'd be my question. It would be better Josh's question if he was here, but. The, the process was, it was Concept A before it came to council. So.
Okay, yeah.
There was the public process that was going on and public meetings, given A, B, and C, which do you prefer? And the tendency, as described in the report, is that it was preferred that Concept A maximizing housing was the preferred option. That's what was recommended to council.
Okay.
Council accepted the report but did not.
Right.
Approve the report, so it's not technically been approved by.
Engagement process, staff heard a preference for Concept A, made the recommendation to council. Council, I can't remember, was it adopted or accepted?
It's accepted.
Okay, accepted. That's kind of how we got.
Yeah, White and Burke was the one who ran the process, not staff. So this was all run through, through our consultant, White and Burke, and they, they worked through the process. And that was the, the recommended.
Thank you, Mike.
And I believe Concept A was mixed recreation and housing, right? There was a maximum, there was a minimum, and there was a mixed, a balanced, I guess, recreation. And there was also a, it wasn't just a math. It, it had a, well, it had a financial aspect, a number, a housing minimum and maximum, a profit-loss profile. So there was more to it than just, you know, where things might go.
Yeah, I guess I would just add, adding on to Seth's comment, that the, the intent was to make sure while we're developing concepts, we're looking at feasibility. There's no sense bringing to council something that hasn't been examined for feasibility, which is why there's the preliminary environmental review. Can we build here? What would be the barriers? In this case, Act 250 is a barrier which we can get out of. And that's why we're pursuing what we're doing to be able to get out of Act 250, because it would free, free us up. And it'll come back, don't worry. And the, the other, the other piece of that is of course the financial. And that's where, by having the concepts and having some rough numbers, we could start running through the financials of, if this is going to be built, it's probably going to be built with TIF ballpark. Do we have enough here?
To cash flow.
To cash flow the construction of the infrastructure. And that's what the rest of the document talks about is, is this, and that's where White and Burke's specialty comes in is, all right, we have what we'd like to do, and here's what it means.
Okay, thank you. That's really helpful.
I can add, just to add to what.
You'll have to be near the phone, near a microphone.
Oh, yeah, sorry. I know, because it's, uh, there's a lot, a lot of public process, like Elsworth Parks Director. There were two rounds of A, B, and C. There was, the first A, B, and C was all housing, all recreation, and then balanced. And it was clear everybody wanted, or, you know, there was support for the balanced. What you just saw was the second round of A, B, C, which was three different options for.
With balance.
Balanced, what that looks like.
Yeah.
Sorry if you said that before.
Yeah.
But that second set was the only set that was brought to the council for decision.
Understood, yeah. Thank you. Thanks for letting me ask those questions.
Thanks, Alex.
So the follow-up question. Sorry, trying not to go down the rabbit hole here, but so there were three sets, A, B, and C, that were sent to council for approval. Why weren't there other options that listed, you know, all single-family homes, townhomes? Like, why did you focus on those multi, like, the apartment buildings? Like, what was the thought process behind that? Because you could still have single-family homes on that property. You know, the number that would equate to that number here, but, you know, I just think, you know, why are those apartment buildings up there?
I mean, generally speaking, the, the idea was to try to maximize density. So you can see in this unit count for A, this identified a total of 292 units. That includes the multifamily housing and then the townhomes themselves. And so then, if you fast forward to option B, stepped down a little bit, so the density, the number of units was 268. And then option C, total units was 184, just because we lost some of the townhomes here. But I guess that's why we're here today. We can tease out whatever the new vision is or ideas that people would want to explore.
Yeah, I think that just the general political sentiment was get as many on here as you can get.
Yeah, and I, I think from the process standpoint, the meeting that happened in June was really where we had commissioned a public process to develop a recommendation for council to consider. So at that point, the June presentation was really, here's the results of this public process, understanding that you guys could, you, you as council or the people who were there at the time, could accept that as it is, or you could take it under advisement and make adjustments to it. But at that point, White and Burke and VHB had done their job under the contract, which was to facilitate a public process, come up with a, a recommended path forward, and to hand that back to council. And now, two years later, after floods and everything else, we're finally back to go through and say, okay, well, what does this look like now? So that, that's why there wasn't a view of, a process of, here are three options for council. It's because that wasn't the process that was laid out in the contract.
All right. Alex, yeah, come on up again.
Oh, I could sit back and then be.
We need you into the mic.
Yeah, there, there is a direct answer to your question in the actionable master plan. On page 19, it says, note, this plan explicitly does not include any single-family homes. This was the desire of city council and the favorite option by the public. That being said, the city should remain open to all housing, et cetera, et cetera. Many factors, many factors could affect the ultimate design of the site and should be considered at such time by the city council, so.
Mike, another question about the, the area where the multi-story buildings are pictured here. There was a, there's a note in the, in the plan where it's, it's talking about the environmental investigation. And it talks about the, the contours having been changed when the golf course was built, that there might be a lot of fill in that area. Did we explore that at all? I know there's a sort of a, it's a very flat area with a sort of a swale at one point. But apparently, according to the document, it, it was very different or somewhat different from what it, what it is now. I take it it was a steeper slope of some kind.
Yeah, so I mean, from the natural resource assessment, if the, our wetland scientists went out and delineated it based on current conditions. So the, the mapping that you see depicted here, for some reason it's not as legible on there as my screen. So these natural resources that are identified on this mapping are what is out there today. So these would be the constraints that we would be sort of held to from A and R's perspective.
So what was the source of that comment? Am I, am I remembering something that was, I saw someplace else?
You were questioning whether the grading had been altered at some point on the site?
There was a comment, I believe, that the topography was different prior, prior to the golf course and was altered during the construction of the golf course. Is that not in this document? Maybe it's where else it would be.
What, I guess, I'm not, I'm not unclear what your, what the relevancy is of it, just in this context.
Oh, I just wondered if we, if we explored the quality of the, of the fill in that, if in fact it was significantly filled.
Uh, we didn't do any geotech reports ourselves in this effort, no.
Yeah.
If that's what you're asking.
Yeah, I guess that is.
No. So the features, the natural resource features that are here today are, you know, as a result of the golf course having been constructed and the topography and the drainage patterns have been established since then.
And the, the basic road alignment we picked is, is derived from missing those and threading the needle through a lot of real natural resource constraints of the site. That's why in each version we showed, it was more like just changing the density of the housing in the road network. It's pretty much the same. It's not a lot of leeway in that.
I think I can answer that question, so.
Yeah.
Because, well, I think probably where you got that is from the phase two assessment. And, you know, Manicoli argues that the property supports what you're saying. And then the phase two does say that in many of the boring sites, they didn't counter fit, so.
Okay, I, I know I'd seen, I know I'd seen it somewhere. Oh, okay. Yeah. All right, so it was a stone environmental report. I'll, I'll check on that later. Thank you, Alex.
He's referring to a different phase two, the one, the phase two that White and Burke Director. Do you feel like we, I, like, I interrupted your flow? Sorry, Mike.
No, I think that sort of captured where the plans sit today. And then so we're moving forward, we're hoping to hear additional thoughts and get additional clarification on what you'd like the master plan to be presented as and sort of best suited for your needs going forward for the city plan and sort of your TIF application.
Are there other questions for Mike or Mark? One of, one of my concerns in, in reviewing this plan before we accepted it is the, the flat area where the, the city has limited flat land that is outside of the floodplain. In fact, I would go so far as to say this is the last, the last bit of relatively flat,
Yeah.
non-flooding property in the, in the, within the city boundary. I don't think that's unreasonable. So I, I wanted to be as unrestricted in what was possible, the possible use for that land, because we've lost, for example, the Dog River ball fields. They, you know, they're still there, but they're, they're likely to flood again and again. And we're, we're altering the, the landscape down there to protect the waste treatment plant and so on. So it seems to me that this, in terms of recreational use for this property, there's lots of hiking and sledding and all kinds of stuff, but in terms of flat property, this is it. And so I, I wanted to review the use of that area where the, where the five-story buildings are and leave open the possibility that that would be recreational fields. Because also the northernmost part of what is now called the recreation zone is, it's not the, the really steep part. That's, that's up higher, but it's definitely, it's definitely uphill for several hundred yards.
That's right.
And to use it as a, as fields would be difficult.
Right.
Whereas there's a, there is a swale on the, on the western side, but two distinct flat areas. So that, that's one of the issues that prompted this review. And, and I understand that there are trade-offs between density and, and, you know, where we actually build housing. But one of the goals is to see how flexible we can be in describing that area.
Sure, great.
Anything else? Yeah.
I'm looking at the agenda, just making sure.
Yeah, I mean, I, I would speak to that a little bit of just, like, I think it's really keeping our eyes on the prize of what is the goal of today. I mean, obviously what I think the goal of today is. And, you know, I think what we're, where we're at is we need some kind of identified concept that council can approve in order to have it be a part of the actionable plan that can allow for a Growth Center designation application to move forward and TIF feasibility study and TIF designation move forward. And so I think where the tension is, right, is like this kind of, is it, where's the appropriate mix? I mean, it's the same kind of tension that we've had all along with this of like, where's the appropriate mix of recreation versus housing and all of those kinds of things? I actually think seeing the environmental restraints is super helpful, because it limits the realm of the possible, and it makes it easier to make decisions. I think the, the, I'm just going to put out my point of view is I would really like to know how specific the concept needs to be in order for the next steps to take place. You know, like, how, how kind of, how baked does that, does it need to be in order for the Growth Center application and the TIF district to go on? And I, you know, I had underlined this exact same thing that Alex had said, you're right. This plan does not include single-family homes. But it said, that being said, the city should remain open to all housing product possibilities that may emerge as a result of the next phase and working with a development partner. Many factors could affect the ultimate design and the site should be considered at such time by the city council. I mean, where I'm working for the assumption is that we, we kind of delineate the, the sandbox and then ask the develop, developers, you know, within these confines of our values as a community, what we've set as priorities, what can you do with the site given these constraints? And so in that way, I think leaving the concept as broad and general as possible is advantageous. But I'm curious from your kind of professional expertise, like, how specific does it need to be at this point?
Well, some of that will be answered in a, two agenda items from now on. When Mike talks about the requirements of the, of the growth center. Well, we could unless, unless Mike or Mark has, has input there.
I think just generally, like, when we work on these sort of conceptual master plans, even with developers, like, they're looking for highest best use, like, how much density can I get? And then that sort of feeds into infrastructure, their pro forma, development costs, soft costs. And so I think in the vein of that idea and this process, this was basically trying to, is an exercise of like, how much density could this site yield?
Right.
And so if that's too specific or too granular right now for leaving flexibility for openness, then we can sort of peel that back and leave it more broadly open, available. Perhaps, you know, we sort of scale back to more like this idea of creating development areas or development pods. And maybe there's a yield matrix that's created, say, you could get approximately so many units per area. And then also identify sort of where we were before with a road network coming through, and that sort of feeds to Mike's requirements for the TIF funding, for infrastructure costs, water, power, sewer. a road network coming through and that sort of feeds to Mike's requirements for the TIF funding for infrastructure costs, water, power, sewer, roadway. You know, that's, that's sort of a, a need and, you know, think about density, uh, units, uh, bathrooms, that sort of feeds into the sewer capacity, water capacity. So that's like a service and need requirement. So that sort of feeds into the TIF funding.
So we'll, we'll, we'll find out from a little more from Mike a, about the requirements. But the, 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 um, sort of map, the alternate map that you just described, or one possibility for an alternate map, is that, is that wildly unusual? Or is it something you've done before and seen before?
That's just, that keeps it up at a higher level, uh, master planning. And I think maybe that's your idea of more crooked, creating flexibility, uh, with what's possible once you find a development partner, uh, to come in and assist the process.
Okay, great, good, thank you.
The development partners also go through a whole, um, market study to find out what is selling in the area, what they can profitably build.
Well, yeah, and it seems, it just seems to me to leave it as flexible as, as we can, given the constraints that Mike will talk about. And then when we, when we're in a dialogue with the developer, it's a give and take situation based on our goals and their goals.
Having said that.
Other questions?
Yeah, like having said that, I think it's really critical that, um, when we do finally go out to developers through an RFP, that there is clarity around what we are looking for and what our goals are, right? And, and so that's the balance of like, show us what your vision is in the realm of the possible, but within kind of our values and parameters that we've set as a community. Right? And so just making sure that we're, number one, that we have consensus on that and that number two, we're super clear about it when it goes out and then it's predictable.
And I could see a scenario where it's not one developer, you could have
Absolutely.
Two or three, because one developer focuses more on density, five-story multifamily housing. And you have other developers that are more like, I'm into townhomes and single family.
Yeah, totally.
Yep.
Let's not say this now, it might be for later future consideration, but I mean, I, I've know these concept, concepts have been developed. And, you know, I've read the report and, you know, based on the data, people do want multifamily housing because they want to downsize. But, and they said they, you know, weren't, you know, the single-family homes weren't necessarily, you know, the top priority. But I'm just going to assume, maybe that's bad, but single-family homes, I think, when this community thinks about them are these large McMansions on these big lots. But it doesn't have to be that way. And I really wish that we would consider, um, you know, this property is such an amazing opportunity to have smaller size homes so that our, you know, aging in place population has access to gardens, has access to a yard rather than these big tall apartment buildings. I would love for us to focus on those high-density areas in our downtown. We have space available, we're going to potentially be doing a housing assessment where we can look at infilling our downtown area where people can have those apartment opportunities, they can have condos. We can really develop what we already have that is vacant and is ready to hopefully, you know, build. But I think this potential property, I just don't want us to be a Chittenden County, I don't want us to be Williston. Um, you know, I've been, you know, I go to these communities where I'm driving, I, one of the communities that pops up into my head is UMass Amherst. When you're driving in this very rural road and all of a sudden you have these huge buildings out of nowhere, you're like, ah. It's like assaulting to my brain. And so I don't want us to be driving on this rural road in the middle of this beautiful Vermont country, because we are rural. We, we sometimes say that we are a big city, we're not, we're a rural area. And I don't, I personally would be very against these big apartment buildings on this property because I think it would be ugly. And I think we have to think very creatively of single-family homes, townhomes that are, you know, like in DC, these row houses. But beautiful, a beautiful place that's not, um, you know, assault to our heads when we have a downtown that could be very much developed in terms of density. I don't think we should use that property for that area. That's, so that is kind of putting a whole different spin on this, but I, I've talked to so many people and I think the survey is they don't want single-family homes because they don't want McMansions. And I think that we've like interpreted that data a little bit skewed. And so I just want us to consider that today as we think about the future of this property. Got to save my piece there with all my mind.
Yeah.
Other questions or comments? Good. Thank you.
Arnie and.
Mike and Mark, are you, are you, um?
You're going to stick around?
Yeah.
For the morning, okay, great, good, thanks. Yeah, let's move to item six on the agenda. Uh, community services.
And I think also Amy was planning to join us at eleven, so she might.
Yeah, we're a little ahead of schedule, actually, shockingly. I thought we were going to fall behind. Uh, you feel like you can begin without her or?
Yeah.
Cause we, okay, great.
So we're, we're mostly talking about the outdoor facilities right now. So just to kind of give you a layout of what we're.
And you just introduce yourself so people know who.
I am Arnie McMullin, Director of the Recreation Department and Alec Ellsworth, Parks and Trees Director.
So our, this is currently what we're using, the outdoor space right now. We have, you know, we have areas where we have, uh, soccer fields, we have.
Were we getting into specifics?
Yeah.
I just do like a couple of big picture things.
Sure.
Yep. Um, so I guess, uh, I wanted to share a couple of little bits of background about the property and, and parks and recreation use of it that I think are helpful. Obviously, I don't want to rehash all the public process and, and whatnot, but that, you know, there was, we looked at this backwards approach. The, there, there is quite a bit of, um, already happening, you know, um, recreation on the property even prior to the city buying it. So there's, you know, like, oh, hey, man, that's.
Sorry, I keep.
You're early.
I'm early and so late.
So, yeah, the property is on the green print, which is the document that sort of lays out the big picture, you know, expansion of this hub and spoke system of trails and greenways. You know, big picture being like hundred years of how we can eventually move throughout Montpelier. Uh, and it also sits at the crux of, you know, multiple towns. So there's really a huge amount of potential here. Um, and I think everybody throughout the process sort of recognized that and it's not going to happen overnight. I think we're keenly aware of the limitations, especially parks and recreations capacity right now, um, but the potential is there. Um, and then a second big, the second thing is just like, yeah, the existing uses and then, um, future, even since the city has bought it, you know, we have sort of been working off of this concept day plan and things have been like, for example, the, you know, the recreation, like fall rec soccer happens out there. We, you know, per, per your point, Sal, the lack of flat space, when we started the feast farm and, and moved our tree nursery, we moved it to Home Farm Way, this property that was, you know, somewhat compromised because of the lack of space at that time, Country Club Road wasn't an option, it was still a golf course. Um, so we have, you know, moved it because we didn't really have another option, um, for a place to move it. That's not to say it needs to be a fixed constraint as we plan, but that's just an example of like something that has been moved up there because of the opportunity and the roughed-out plan of what we decided. So, um, as we think about, you know, changing things and, and moving things around, I would say like, let's not be bound by, let, let's, let's live in that, um, conflict of like not being bound by what we're doing there while also recognizing that like work has been done to move things along for the community in that space. Um, is that, that makes sense?
That makes a lot of sense. And the other thing that Sal brought up, which is a good point, is a lot of our athletic fields are in floodplains. Which if you go around the state, you go through where Twinfield High School is, you'll have seen that their fields have been flooded a couple of times this year. And a lot of the reason why those fields exist is because they are in floodplains, otherwise a lot of them would probably have buildings on them. So for soccer fields and things like Dog River, my hope is to recover that field at some point. We've been working on parts of that, but we also expect it to flood again. Whether or not we should put the time into making softball fields down there, because softball material for infields is much more expensive to continue it to, to replace, whereas a soccer field, we can rotate till, drag it, throw ground down grassy, we'll probably have to put that in as part of our plan. Um, but this is an opportunity up here, this property initially was also bought with the purpose of recreational use. Um, which a chunk of the rec fund balance actually purchased, helped purchase this property for, um, you know, for this idea and the future of recreation and with the hopes, my dreams of someday a community center up there, you know, which could also be an emergency shelter of things, because again, we're out of the floodplain. So there's a lot of, a lot of opportunity up there, but I also think the idea of housing up there is a good idea too. You know, there's, there's just so much opportunity that can happen up here, but that's for you guys to, to figure out, but.
But, but to that point, I think, you know, we're all on the same team here, especially with Mike, and, and there's not, there's the view from the recreation side is like, all of this stuff is going to enhance the housing and make it more desirable to live there. So I just wanted to state that explicitly for you all and everybody else.
Which will also create out, you know, reasons why people want to move to Montpelier. The questions I used to get a lot when I answered the phone a lot more is what's the school district like and what have they got for recreation and parks? Those are the two questions I used to get mostly when people were thinking about moving to Montpelier. But the opportunity up here is, is a, a great opportunity and we're trying to maximize the space that we are using to the best of our ability, because we do know, um, you know, space is limited, there's not a lot of flat areas in Montpelier left, um, to put fields on. And, you know, if there's a way to create even more flat space up there, that would be great. But, um, you know, the goal is to get the best use possible out of that property. So the community members and the citizens see opportunities that they might not see. And it, and the, the other beauty of this property too, being that it is open. It's one of the few areas you can go to in the summertime and not have to be covered in, in bug juice. You know, you go up to Hubbard Park or you go to, you know, North Branch. Quite honestly, you have to wear repellent, otherwise you're, you're peppered by mosquitoes and
Never go there.
You know, so you have to, yeah, you're never there, right? You've never seen a mosquito. But, um, up here, it's, it's really pretty amazing because it, it does give that opportunity where you don't have to be doused to, to enjoy the outdoors. So.
So this, what you're looking at is just one page from when the, we did the RFP for partnerships up there. We put together the vision for community services and the city side of things. Um, not really as a proposal, but just as sort of like, this is what, this is what, um, you know, kind of like a baseline of what we're looking for as a community. So this is just one page out of it and that document, I think, like goes into more detail about current uses, future uses, if you want it for reference. And, you know, I think what, what you see here is kind of how we're using it currently as, as an FYI. And it fits exactly into Concept A. And the only difference is, uh, the sledding hill, I think, has emerged. Can you actually draw, Mike, would you mind putting up the map of the, um, maybe just the buildable areas? Thinking. I think the sledding hill has emerged as just like a valuable community asset. Um, you know, obviously that whole top part of the property is like extremely amazing for development. I mean, in terms of like having a house up there has really incredible views. You know, if I could, if I could add like one little additional recreation area for me, it would be just to take the, the, the slice of that, Mike, can you put your mouse over like that? Um, well, either Mike, yeah, exactly. Just, oh, just the right-hand side of that, like just where the sledding hill is, I think people can picture that. Yeah, right there, exactly, right there, would be to preserve that for, for the community to use. I think it's, it's in the winter sledding, it's, um, great for skiing and the summer, like our mountain bike club has interest in using that area. And then for, it would allow everybody who has a house on this property to use that in perpetuity instead of just, I think it would be awkward to have housing like right at the top of that while people wanted to use that as.
Sorry, I just want to be sure I understand when I'm looking at Concept A.
Yeah.
Is the sledding hill captured and what's designated as the recreation?
It's not, yeah.
So you're talking about like where this, how these townhomes are up here at the top?
What, what kind of the bottom?
The bottom row of it.
Can you put up Concept A?
Well, then.
It's also got really great views from that location, you can see camels hump and everything, so everybody that lives up there could walk over and check it out.
Oh, to the side?
Trees going right up through that turnaround.
So not this whole area, most of it, you know, I think it's very attractive, it's buildable, but and, and this is a complete aside, so.
Okay, thank you. But I, maybe here's a more general question of just, you know, I think honestly, like a fundamental question that we're kind of hearing is like, well, you know, where does the rec, you know, where's the recreation zone and, and, you know, passive resi, um, recreation, all that kind of stuff. But like, are you comfortable with the layout of where, of Concept A in terms of the recreation?
Overall, I think we are. I mean, we, you know, it's given us 12 acres to work with. You know, we wouldn't say no to a little bit of expansion and, you know, if it allowed for the public for more opportunity for viewing or picnic areas or different things like that. You know, a lot of, a lot of housing developments, developments now also include an, a, like a little recreational area within the development. You know, so that way their people have a place that they can hang out and, and do things. So, which I think has gotten pretty smart, because a lot of places, the, the lawn areas have gotten reduced.
I guess, I guess, yeah, no, I appreciate that. I guess my question is like, are you worried about the ability to put in the soccer fields and all of those kinds of things? Or potential future sports barn things or whatever on, in Concept, in Concept A? Do you feel like it could accommodate?
If you look on the back there, we, we actually have a concept on the back of that page I gave you is a double site.
Oh, yeah.
Um, there's just our, our thing that we presented to council back in February, which is our concept of our future community center and where we would try to lay that out with, you know, with the idea that it wouldn't interfere too much with the field areas. So we tried to lay that out, so we kept a lot of that flat area within that zone as, as much as we could use.
I'll, I'll add to that.
For perspective, there's, there's the existing clubhouse. And I think the, the, this, the facility that has been talked about for uh, Arnie was just mentioning was tucked into this spot here along the edge. And then there's, has also been potential conversation, if there was a separate tennis barn, that, that could be accommodated down in this park. So it really is, is keeping on this side of the clubhouse. And this area that's really could, really couldn't put any fields back there anyway, so that was.
But again, conceptually. But where, for example, the white arrow is the mouse arrow on, on that, um, that, that could accommodate soccer fields, like the incline on that, that you feel comfortable that.
Hard up, up to the bottom of the sliding hill, we do have a, have a, um, soccer field there. But there's also, it's in a little bit from the edge, it's not right to the edge, so there is some, so.
And, and does it run uphill?
The soccer.
It's a good, it's a good home, home court advantage.
But.
But I would, I would estimate that it runs at least eight feet uphill over, over, what you have pictured here as a soccer field with at least eight foot difference in elevation, one end to the other, maybe more.
Yeah, I never actually checked that. It doesn't feel that way when we mow it and when we walk it.
Hmm.
Um.
Like this, yeah, I think he's right, like this map is not perfect. I think it probably does go into that.
Into the bottom of the sliding hill. Yeah, but we, we stayed below where the incline.
No, the sledding hill is, the sledding hill is a whole separate thing and it's quite steep.
Right.
I know, because I used to have to hit pitching wedges up there.
Yeah.
But from the bottom of the sledding hill, where there's this little swale, there's this, there's a gradual, almost imperceptible eight to 10-foot drop, I think, down to this, down to the level of the building.
We could check the. That kind of thing is easily gradable.
Yeah.
And that, where it's shown.
Well, in the sense that you wouldn't have to, you would, you'd have to retain it somehow at one end, right? Or? Yeah, I'm just, I'm just wondering if, if, if it's acceptable, then fine. I'm, I was thinking of the western side of the, uh, what used to be the ninth fairway as being flat already up until you get to the little swale. And quite wide and would need almost no grading whatsoever. And even if it did, there's no, it drops off instead of heading uphill at the end.
I think one of the things we were thinking of in this was to keep the facilities and buildings as well as fields contiguous to each other, not start spreading them out. You know, if we switched housing to the other side, I, I just didn't seem to go right. Kind of liked where they, where they were and how these guys are using it now.
I'll say like there, what was laid out here is somewhat aspirational and also reflects reality because there's two types of fields, right? There's, you can put the, the rec league soccer on one type of field. The high school soccer team's not going to play on this without major regrading and making it, you know.
It has to be bigger too.
Yeah, like a standardized sized field, but it's perfectly suitable for our, our younger kids and, and all kinds of programming, you know, other things happen out there. It's not just soccer. My experience of that area, and I guess I'm, to be honest, I'm not totally sure what the ninth fairway is like. Um, but I think what we're using now seems to me to be the flattest area to the west of what we're using. There's that big swale where the pond is and, and the low area. And then there is a smaller flat area. Is that where you're referring to like?
Well, no, there's, from the building to the swale is relatively flat. Um, and the former ninth green sits just outside the building. It's raised.
Oh, yeah.
And overgrown now, and then the, the feast farm garden is up a little further and below the feast farm is the ninth fairway.
So uh, you're talking about this area right here?
Yes.
So I think is, that's in the rec community recreation zone, if I'm not mistaken, right? Because it's sort of like this.
Uh, I don't, I, I don't think so.
It's, uh. Here's the pond. And the community rec zone is like, is like this, is my understanding. So and, and then this is the swell. So my understanding of the community rec zone is it goes up to the swell. So I think what you're describing Sal is currently in it.
Does it in fact? Go up to the swell?
Put concept A back up.
So is this the pond?
Yeah.
So this is the swell. This is the big dip.
And then the area beyond it is another flat area which.
And so we, yeah, I mean, we have chatted about using this also as a field. Because right now we just use these, those areas, but between the, the sand traps and the green and the fact that that space is used.
Sorry, I should be at a mic.
Between the sand traps and the green and the fact that that space is used as sort of a, a landing spot for most people. I think it, it's ripe for field development, but um.
Needs some work.
You just need to a little bit of work, not like major regrading. Yeah, I, I see the same thing that you're seeing, I think, yeah. So I just wanted to go circle back to your question.
Yeah.
So the simplest answer for me, I think is yes. Happy with how it's been laid out. I think it makes a lot of sense. My addition to that would be if for some reason it was favorable to the city to not develop on the prime ag soils, we would use all that space for recreation for fields. Like I think there's a demand such that would be mad. I, that's way outside our lane as far as whether or not, you know, there's so many things involved, which Mike holds as far as cost benefit and the TIF and all that stuff.
Right, right.
But I just want.
Yeah, no, I just think like, I, my question is, we all know this is going to be some kind of balance of recreation housing and like the way that it's laid out in concept A, I just want to know that this, this core, uh, this accommodates the vision that you guys have presented so far.
Yep, I think so.
Yeah, I guess my friendly amendment to that would be like, it doesn't meet necessarily the demand.
Right, yeah.
But it is very supportive of what's laid out, yeah.
And this is also with the idea that we still have other fields in other parts of the community. If this was our only space, then I would say we wouldn't have nearly enough fields.
And then the other thing, just bigger picture about the property is like, there's all these areas that are not really developable and you know, if we're talking about the wings and the wetlands, but, and like, that's sort of the space that at least I often live in is like these marginal areas that can't be developed, but they're good for trails and you can make good use for the community. So that is in my mind too, just longer term.
Beyond what you depicted here, could you see like a future like recreation expansion, like facilities currently in the flood plain, like who attract from those sites and then really intensify this with their main recreation hub?
We would, we would need more space, but yeah, yeah. Cause right now, I mean, you know, our, our one field that tends to take on waters, Dog River Field, that's the one that seems to knock on wood. We've been very lucky with the rec field that that hasn't flooded down there. Because that, a lot of that is, if it's not in the flood plain, a lot of it's very close to it. Um, but thanks to the dam that has prevented us from that. But that's always been a worry I've had and one of the things I think about as we go into the future. Cause it happened to another community recreation department where they didn't shut off their pool filters when Irene hit. And all that water went to their pool and they ruined their filter system, you know, so things we got to think about in flood areas or flood conditions that shut stuff down so it doesn't get pulled into a system that if we do have that issue. So just something to think of. I saw my day camp on tent underwater on the other side of the river, which is pretty hard to watch, but you know, the pavilion, thank goodness is on the side that doesn't flood at this time. So, but yeah, space, space for recreation is a premium. So any opportunities we have to grow or expand, it's good.
Well, yes, I, I appreciate uh, Ben's, Ben's question. And I appreciate your answer. I'm, I'm trying to think, you know, 20 years plus down the road. And as I mentioned, I see this as the last available flat piece of property in the city. And so if it's, th- this may be your next to last opportunity to say, yes, we, we'd like to preserve as much of that as possible. If, if you don't feel you need to do that, then.
I guess if the question is, if we can preserve it in addition to what we were looking at with the 12 acre space, then I would think that would be a great idea, but I'm not looking, I guess, at swapping where we, within the 12 acre to, to get up that space. So I, I, if we can expand it, I think that would be great because that would be a good long-term vision for community recreation and parks.
Good, thank you for that. Um, was there a comment? Did I miss someone who wanted to comment in the room?
Just from a process point of view, I don't know if we're taking.
I, I don't think it hurt, it hurts if people have shortcoming, okay.
I just had a quick question because
Thank you.
I've heard different acreage amounts uh, over the years. 12, 15, 18 is, is Arnie right? That it's a, the designated rec area in concept in D and D. Is 12 acres or is it more than 12 acres?
Wants to check my long-term memory.
Unclear.
Also, as Mike has mentioned, like what's, the lines on this map are, it's not like they're.
Yeah.
Surveilled, they haven't been surveyed, yeah.
Probably range would be an appropriate answer to that, not like, like 12 to 15.
Uh, well, we've completely interrupted your presentation. I, I mean, there's a lot of good information, but if you had other things to
Somehow covered it in a meander. Except for anything you wanted to add.
I, I just, I'm supporting the other uh, portions of the community service department. Uh, and recreation, as you know, is for all ages and the senior center will certainly have um, ways that it can use this recreation space as well. As you know, our facility on Berry Street has no outside in, well, we have a playground, but it's not exactly for seniors. But uh, so having access to um, an environment where we can do things like outdoor tai chi or walking clubs or um, whatever, picnic duration, uh, that would be extremely um, beneficial to us. Their, the seniors make up 40, 42% of the Montpelier uh, population. And so having things that would address their needs for being outside, for having opportunities for recreation is going to be really important. So.
Great, yeah, thank you.
And, and just to chime in on the senior piece for just a second, is one of the things that makes that area really valuable for is having those asphalt paths that are accessible for seniors to actually go out and, and enjoy the property. So.
Uh, I have a follow-up to something Alex mentioned earlier on. Looking at the, well, when, when you were discussing the general layout and of current use, the tree nursery is, I take it relocatable. I mean, it's there because it's convenient now, but it could, I mean, the, the property has a large undeveloped western, kind of hard to get to, but there's a great sledding hill there, by the way. I don't know if you've been there. It's huge. But you could relocate, I take it, the tree nursery to another part of the property, um, as long as it was accessible somehow.
Yeah, so we're basically looking for a couple of things out of a tree nursery. One is easy access with a vehicle. Um, two is access to water. And then three is like a space that we can enclose for, so that it's protected from deer browsing. So we used to have a tree nursery for many, many years at the nature center. It didn't meet a couple of those criteria, except for the enclosure. It was not easy to access, didn't have great water. So we moved to Home Farm Way, had a beautiful setup, was completely destroyed, seemed irresponsible to set it up there again.
Yeah.
So now we, I think we've achieved those criteria here. Could it happen in the West? I mean, I've been all over the property because we groomed the ski trails, um, and you know, just doing this project. So I'm, I'm familiar with it out there. Sure, it could go. It could go a variety of places. So yes, the short answer, it could be moved wherever we can try to meet those criteria.
What about the feast farm?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, the feast farm is a little bit less flexible than um.
It's why I asked, I assumed it was.
And, and I just also want to acknowledge that we're just living with a lot of uncertainty as far as these programs and our capacity. It, it's turnkey up there, you know, it's, there's a fence, it's all beautifully laid out. We, we've had a really good, successful program up there. And you know, I'd like to see it continue in some capacity, um, as the project evolves. You know, that could turn, it could turn into community gardens. It could turn into a variety of things. It could move if, you know, so. Uh, yes, yes, is the answer to all those questions.
Okay, great. Any other questions, comments?
Going back to Mr. Winthrop's question, so as depicted in this graphic, that's 13 acres. That recreation zone.
John, if you.
Question on the uh.
Can you come to the, can you come to the mic? Is this mic on? Yeah, the podium mic is on.
Quick question on the property that is to the right, upper right into the woods. That slope is very similar to the area that's just to the right of this rectangle designated sledding. That is a similar slope to the open area and I'm wondering whether just because there are trees on it, that makes it unsuitable for housing. Or whether you, we should be thinking there were trees a lot on a lot of property in Montpelier and now they're housing and that whether that shouldn't be available up to obviously the streets. And I wondered what the thinking was on that, whether there's a reason not to have housing in the woods. Seems sort of arbitrary.
I think some of the early options actually included housing in that area.
And my understanding is we are looking at that. Is that right, Mike? I mean, it's not off the table per se, going back again to this concept plan is.
Yeah.
Concept.
Not off the table. It's just more difficult and I mean, without getting into the weeds on that, there's um, there've, there've always been discussions of trying to find, is there a way of getting a road that goes back to Town Hill? And there's actually a developable piece of land that is off to the north east. And if there were a road that passed through this area, it could connect into another larger parcel that could be developed for housing that does connect to Town Hill in East Montpelier. So um, it's, but nothing has been explored with that property owner. Um, it's been, as we said, it's just put out there as, you know, if we're looking at different ways, well, there's one way that could go back if that person was interested. Here's a way over here. So, but nothing, until, until we have figured out what we're doing, then we'll get to the next step.
Great, thanks, Mike. Uh, other questions or comments? Steve Whitaker.
Yeah, Steve Whitaker, um. I, I'm kind of a gassed at, at, at looking at this draft memo.
That'll come up next. If you want to wait until I've talked about it.
Well, no, I, I want to comment on it.
Yeah, let me introduce it first.
Well, no, uh, this is my public comment. This, this is a.
Uh, I, I think you're out of order. We'll wait for that agenda item to come up and you can comment when other people.
Commenting generally, because I, there's been a, a meeting last Friday that.
You can comment generally in the next session, in the next agenda item. We're, we're wrapping up this, really, Steve.
You just gave me the, the.
I'm taking, I'm taking, I can, and I'm taking away from you. I'll give it back to you in like two minutes, okay? Is there any other comment? Or questions on the presentation by the community services department? Okay.
Thank you.
Very much.
Thank you.
Uh, and we're amazingly. So it makes sense to me to have Mike do his presentation and take comments afterwards when others in the room will be aware of, of the uh, presentation.
All right. So what I just handed out was a couple, a couple of pieces. So what I wanted to go over from the planning perspective is that we've got really two, um, two scales that we're trying to work from. Uh, one is, we need enough detail for us to put in a, a growth center application. And so what I've included on the, this page is the requirements that are in for a concept plan, which uh, basically says a concept plan depicting the character of the streets and public spaces within the growth center and depicting the general sizes and placement of buildings envisioned in the municipal plan for the growth center. So we're looking for a general plan. That's of course fairly vague as to what that could, you know, that's, there's nothing explicit about that. When we applied previously, the concept A, the amount of information in the concept A was sufficient. And that wasn't, wasn't an issue. Um, I think we have considerable amount of um, variability or flexibility in what we try to present, but we do have to keep in mind, we do need enough there. So if we were going to be talking about creating, um, as Mike pointed out, maybe we go back to the zones. We've got these zones. What would we expect in this zone? What would we expect in this zone? Show the road because the road is going to define our infrastructure costs. So if we know roughly, here's where our road is. It may move here, it may move here, but roughly it's going to go here and going to go across because that's what we need to avoid our environmental constraints and to fit that, and to thread the needle on the road. But what we expect in those can be more generally applied and discussed. You know, as they said, general sizes and placement of buildings, we could just, we could put that as almost written text of, of what, what that means. What are we looking to achieve? So that's, that's the one scale. We need that much detail. We need enough detail for that.
So, excuse me, so we, we don't need to have pictures of five-story buildings or townhouses.
I don't think we need.
On the map.
I, the more, the better.
But we could talk about the types of structures in not necessarily located on the map, but in a, in a side, uh, details showing an elevation or something of what, what a typical structure might look like or type of structure.
I, I think, and, and I can follow up with that, even, even a detailed narrative. Again, they're talking about, we need to depict on the map, general sizes and placement of buildings. So if we're talking about five different zones of housing development and zone um, F, which is shown here, you know, it says th- these could be uh, area that could be developed for single-family homes or or townhouses or other things, um, because we need increment, we may go through and say. Because we need increment, we may go through and say. Provided, there is at least so many housing units or provided that the developer demonstrates. The ability that the the increment, the necessary increment to support the infrastructure has been provided. And whether we break those into pieces or whether we break that as to a whole, to go through the whole piece. It would have to be i- in that vein of of having enough specificity there, and again, I can follow up with. With them, once we have a concept, once you have something you do like, before we go back to city council, I can take that to. The state and talk to them and and say, all right, this is where we're at, this is how we're developing this, what concerns do you have? Is there something council should add or something the subcommittee should meet again to add into this to provide additional detail?
So you could bring whatever concept we come up with, you could bring it to the folks at the state and say, does this seem, you know, do you have advice? Is this sufficient in your?
Yeah, we would be, I would be bringing it to the staff, so it's kind of like staff going to staff, understanding that the the community investment board would be the one making the determination, but. The staff is the one who's seen these applications before and knows, you know, in the past, we've had less than this. Or in the past, we've always required somebody to have. Something X and Y, um, and we can follow up with the details when when we have that, but as I said. In the past, what we have in concept A was sufficient for us to get through that process. Um, so the other side of the scale. We have, I have also, I had the opportunity to go and uh, meet with a major developer from Chittenden County. Got to talk to him for about an hour, um, he's uh, uh, developed these types of projects. He's interested, he's waiting for the RFP, he said, everybody's interested in hearing, getting this RFP. Uh, his recommendation was. Um, what they want is as much flexibility as possible as they're being given. You know, if we're looking to to find a developer and sell it to them, each one of them is going to have their. Style, their. Their, their product that they are used to developing, and so, um, what they say is, all you're going to do is. Eliminate, the more specific you are with your plan, the more people are either going to drop off, because they're like, well, it's not what I build. So if you want to have a wide variety of opportunities that you then review, that's going to have to. We're, we're going to want to keep this as general as possible, so we've got two, two, two ends of the scale. Be as general as possible, because we, we really want to see what is, what is the market going to support, what do, what is the development community? Say can be built up here profitably, and that's what we want, because. Um, we obviously don't want to run an RFP process and have a product that doesn't get built. So we need that, and we need to meet, um, enough that we can get, because in order for them, the reason why they're interested is because. We're going to have a growth center and we're going to have a TIF. That's why they're interested, they're like that, that makes the dollars and cents work for them, they've got more flexibility to build. What they want to build if they know they're not having to provide the utilities. So, those are the two sides of the scale, so that was the first piece I wanted to to talk to you about. The second piece was. And I, I talked to, to Sal just at the start of a meeting, just to go through and say. What I put together in the memo was really just, I don't know what's going to come out from. PHB's work, if it's just the map or if there's going to be a small report, but. My thought, and this is again, me just taking the. Bold step of stepping out and just putting words on the paper to have something to start to talk about is, what is it we're trying to? We, you are trying to get back to city council. And so it could just be as simple as the new plan or the the new map. And a memo that outlines, here's a little bit of the history. Broadly recommend to approve the Country Club Road Plan with some conditions as outlined below. And with a new concept plan attached to this memo. And I threw a bunch of words in there that kind of just start a conversation, I can send Sal, all of you, and you guys can throw this out, you guys can keep it. It's just, like I said, it was just a starting point to say, what is it we're actually trying to do? What is, what is the deliverable? And then we would have the conditions. And so the conditions could be as general as. Um, council recognizes the due diligence steps in Chapter Ten are recommendations from the consultant and council and therefore. And council therefore reserves the right to add, remove due diligence steps as it sees appropriate for the advancement of the project, so. We're, we're asking, what staff has been asking for is, I want you to approve the plan. What council has said is, yeah, but what about this, and what about this, and what about this? It's like, this would give that opportunity to say, we approved the plan, but. We acknowledge X, that could be a broad statement, you could go very specific into saying. The Abenaki Working Group, this subject is broader than the Country Club Road, where solutions could more effectively be addressed at another location. Or despite the statements on Page Nineteen and other places that CCR actionable plan. Explicitly does not include any single-family homes, the subcommittee recommends allowing single-family dwellings. As an option for developers to consider in any project with a mix of housing types, so it's again. This was an idea of how do we formulate our recommendation back to council? Um, and that's all that this is, this isn't a draft for you guys recommending approval of it. I was just trying to put a little bit of words, a little bit of structure of of how this could happen, and if you want to go this direction. More than welcome to, if you don't, more than welcome to, I just put words to the paper, so that way we could explain. What's our approval? We're trying to approve that plan. Here are the conditions, here are the things that we're not going to follow from that plan. And here's the attached concept plan, and let us explain it to you in words. This is what it means, this is what we're, this is what we're trying to express in this plan, that way we've got an approved plan, we have an approved memo. We have an approved concept plan, and that was a thought. Run with this however you'd like, but I just wanted to put that on the table, that's all this is. Just some suggested way of moving forward, that's why it's clearly labeled draft memo ideas, and you guys can run with it. And that's it.
Questions for Mike from you guys, no? Comments, Steve? On this presentation? We'll get the public comment next agenda.
Well, what's kind of hidden in this. Leading. In a courtroom, this is called leading the witness. But, that language that you can. If the council can. Remove or disregard due diligence steps as it sees fit. And you can't really adopt the White and Burke Plan and then say, we're not going to take. The course that White and Burke recommended, White and Burke recommended a phase two design process. This charade is no substitute, charrette, charade is no substitute for the phase two design process. I understand the motivation to basically. Get you to adopt it by all, at all, by hook or by crook, to adopt a plan that is very different from. What we're, where we would land if we implemented phase two of the design process. Th- this is not public engagement, you know, one or two people or city officials, you know, carving up the baby is not public engagement. And, so. The idea that I, I'm glad to hear. Uh, white VHB, but recommend you could have multiple developers here. But this is not walkable to town, this is not contiguous to the growth center, it's not adjacent. It's separated by steep ravines, woods, you know, et cetera. This is not, this will be either suburban sprawl or a new village, and a new village cannot be done. By developers in response to an RFP that meets the city's needs, the city's needs are very diverse. And we're trying to fit a lot of needs onto this piece of property. So that requires a master plan, which would come out of phase two design. So, I, I feel like you're being led, and this is how the planning commission has been led around too, here, let, let Mike. Run the, and he'll, it'll be, he'll be the only one who can interpret it, but if. The city plan says the planning phase is over right now. Right, the draft city plan that's been referred to council says the planning phase for Country Club Road is completed. That's BS, right? And now you're being asked to approve the actionable plan with some substitutes. And disregard the fact that a core piece of the actionable plan is to conduct phase two design process. So, I believe we're not going to meet the growth center requirements, I think you're being misled, he, the, the planning commission. And the application for the growth center failed for non-compliance with statute last time. And it can easily fail again, even more so the TIF application, in which case we're back to square one, right? So, I believe the only way we're going to get to where we need to go is to. Implement the phase two design. Process. But I see four. I, I see the competitors for this land and no synthesis, no expert synthesis, and VHB is not. Offering or being paid to do that for us, the competitors being Turtle Island, the homeless shelter, the rec department. The Frisbee Golf, the hub and pickleball. For business. The modest housing, high def- high-density housing. Single-family housing. And. It's almost, you, a comparison to the twelve sixteen Main Street. Is, is almost due here, even though it's a different scale, it shows that. We can't articulate our vision, we get no responses to our proposals, right? Mike's trajectory is to turn this loose and let the developers tell us what they want to do, but that's not what we want to do, and this is our land. Right, this is not, you know, owned by Mike or a subcommittee to be dispensed with for developer interest. This is our land, and we need to take the time to do the due diligence to define what, how we're going to mesh all these needs together. Or if we can't fit them there, where else we're going to put them.
Thank you, Steve. Other comments?
Did you want, uh, just for a, a quick rebuttal on the, the phase two planning, so this, we've discussed at council. Uh, there, there are two paths that council could take to, to develop this, and again, White and Burke. Put in their report, their recommended next steps. There was a pushback from the council at the time that, uh, they did, they did not want to. Get into the business of developing property. So, uh, the. Opinion was, we should move forward with a process where we work with the developers, so this isn't. This isn't me, this is not the planning department, this is from council that said. We need to, um, move forward with, uh, a process whereby. We're doing less of the upfront design work in order to leave the window open for developers to come in with various proposals. For council to consider, as opposed to, as, as, I'll call it, there, there's a proposal out right now, uh, in Dorset. Where the city purchased a piece of property, they designed where the roads were going to be, they designed what housing was going to go in what locations. These are going to be single-family homes, we're going to sell these building lots, these are going to be multifamily homes, we're going to sell those off as very, very specific. Developer, it wasn't, uh, put to a developer to say, what could we do? They could have potentially gotten more housing or more opportunities, but at the same time, they were able to control the process. Um, so, that was their process, and we could do it that way, we could have done it that way, the choice was. We should work to move this and get this to an RFP process where we have developers give us things. So we can have a variety of options and look at and say. I like the ideas this person had or this firm had, I'd like that from that one and that from that one, I wonder if we could get. These two worked together, and that's where, at least that's where staff's direction, we feel as staff, that's our direction at this point, that we're moving towards. Getting the growth center, get the TIF, so that way we have as much to offer to. Developers as possible, and then hear from developers as to what they would like to propose.
So just to be clear, that, that actually confirms my question, we, we would not be moving to an RFP process. Until the growth center designation and the TIF district had been in place.
Correct.
Oh, great. Uh, let me just. Respond to that, Mike, a little bit, I think one, one of the goals that we have here. Uh, in the subcommittee is to ensure that we have an opportunity. A future opportunity to make sure that our, that the, the basic needs. That we envision as a city for this property are articulated. When the RFP goes out, and if that requires. Um, additional, some additional process, you know, we, we probably ought to, ought to consider that. Can we, can we, uh, let Sandy, Vitzim into the meeting for comment?
Let's see, if you can, yeah, you might be able to just unmute.
There you are, yeah.
Yeah, sorry, I'm driving, so I hope you can hear me. Um, I, uh, am, it's good conversation. What I'm hoping for is somewhere in between of the spectrum that Mike described. Um, I'm hoping that the city will consider designing the roads. And that would be leave blocks. So, eh, eh, you know, kind of more design than, uh, White and Burke showed on their concept plan. But, and also something that's a little more urban, rather than suburban. And I think that if you can design it down to blocks. Using a consultant. Um, that it will open up, uh, the development opportunities for a lot more developers. Who are smaller and more local, and I think that will cost less, I think there'll be more competition. And I think it's more sustainable if, uh, things go bit wrong in the economic market in the United States.
Thanks, Sandy, appreciate your input.
So I did meet with Sandy yesterday and, um, you know, she has presented a couple of different ideas on the design of Country Club Road. And I think the road layout is obviously critical, in terms of. How we lay this out and, you know, just looking at a couple of different options besides concept A, B, and C. And just seeing how else this beautiful property can be designed is. Was eye-opening for me and just having houses on both sides of the roads and making sure traffic is calmed, because. You know, when I look at concept A, I just see, you know. Those are big road, they're not big roads, I'm sure they're residential twenty-five mile per hour, but. You know, not having houses on both sides of those roads, you know, increases the speeds of cars and. Um, you know, just having that design of the roads, very high-dense, you know, multi. Um, you know, variable housing from single homes to townhomes, and once again, I'll just say, I'm not a huge fan of these big apartment buildings. I think we can still accomplish our financial requirements for the TIF, once I'm, once again, I'm not a mathematician, but. You know, with these numbers, small, single-family homes, a mix of townhomes. But the road is so important to design in terms of, um, our limitations based on the wetland. Um, you know, barriers, but even concept A. I mean, that, there's so much more opportunity to build houses. And I would just, you know, I think it's a balance, what Mike was saying. You know, having those zones of where, where we can build, I think was really important to see. But, and then having multiple developers, kind of what Sandy said, like, I'm. Just hesitant to have, you know, a big Chittenden County developer come in and build one of those apartments like we see off of eighty-nine. I just don't think that's the character of Montpelier, but we'll have the opportunity to approve those designs through the RFP process. Um, once they come through, so I think. You know, the, the road is very, very important in terms of what we design, I think for the growth center application. But having that balance of leaving it kind of open, you know, having those. I think we talked about those blocks or like the parcels, but leaving out multi, you know. Level apartment buildings, townhomes, single-family homes, because I think I would love to see what developers submit. And I would love to encourage multiple developers, we have a lot of local developer, developers in town in central Vermont that wouldn't. Have the capacity to build these huge apartment buildings, but, you know, maybe they would build three small homes if they were able to purchase three lots and. You know, through design review board and through our zoning, we could approve those designs, we could control that process. Um, and so I think just, you know, having it. Broad. It's still specific to meet the requirements of the growth center. While removing all these specific home designations, like the townhomes, and they just feel like, I don't know, that just drives me a little bit crazy. But I think having the road design is very, very, very important, so that you can build on both sides of the roads and have high-density. Housing on this property will be very important, because that is not what is in concept A. Um, you know, you have these like little circles and these big main thoroughfares through this property that don't even have housing on them where. It looks like you can have housing on them, so I would like to see little boxes where there could be. It looks like you can have housing on them, so I would like to see little boxes where there could be potential housing. But have the roads designed more of like, you know, a neighborhood like I'm envisioning. You know, like New York City, right, you have like. The stacks of roads and it's like a grid and people, kids can ride their bikes and there's houses on both sides and. It's a little bit more dense with, you know, leave it up to the developers to decide how they want to build on that land, but. I don't know, it's like a mix. I don't know if any of that made sense, it made sense in my head.
I, we, we really kind of segued into public, public comment, which.
Okay, sorry.
Seems understandable. Did you have a?
Can anyone hear me? Hello?
Yes, who is that?
Yes, hi, this is Brian Jones.
Oh, hi, Brian.
Hi, hi, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm, it's been a great meeting, I appreciate the discussion, I've got my hands full at home here, but I just wanted to. Share one thought based on what I've heard and I think that the presentations look good and I, I think. The. What I'm getting from this is that based on the amount of time it's been since this was originally looked at. And maybe how. Public perception has, I don't want to say changed dramatically, I can't speak to that, but. I do think that a second round of design is going to be helpful for this process. And I think that, I forgot to mention that I'm also an architect and and so. When we're in these design type. Conversations and processes, right, with with a client or a municipality. Data really starts to unlock things. And I think that the explanation of where the road went for geographical reasons was. Was where was very, excuse me, very well stated. But I think that taking a couple of steps backwards and maybe trying to find. Creative ways to engage folks in the community again. Potentially even by having some kind of meeting or gathering on that space. To bring folks to the space. This is a big, you know, to all the comments about where recreation will be in the future. How this special piece of land will be used, this is a very, very significant development for Montpelier. And obviously the residents of Montpelier and our surrounding communities, so I do think that. There are a couple of ways. To engage folks from the community onsite as part of the creative process, which then goes back to the architects who have been charged with looking at this. I just think that's a win win for everybody. And. And I realize that the notion of how circulation from Town Hill Road. Comes into play is unknown, but if you look at it, if, you know. You folks have studied this much more than I have, but if you look at a map, it looks like there are only about two roads that are even relatively close. So maybe just a little bit more. Exploration of of how that circulation works, I think would help define. The attitude of it from, from. Both, you know, both points of ingress, right? Because. Because it's, it's just, we all know how it feels from the other way, but I think, I think it's just something important to consider and and beyond that. I think that. The other comments that I have would would frankly be better. Suited for a second design because I think it it's too, too early, right, to kind of. Start throwing out suggestions like, hey, we should move houses back closer to trees or have recreation space. Closer to where the existing building is now to make it more available to the public. I think things like that are important, but I think in this second round of design. That's the opportunity to sharpen the pencil and again, possibly take a step back. Block things out the way others have spoken about, right, to just try to get a. A sense of the possibilities and obviously the limitations of geography where the road must go. And maybe see a little bit more diversity in what's presented moving forward. And but but I do think that we're off to a good start and I I just think that that second round of. Of of some kind of design process that engages folks in the community. In a very tangible way is is going to be really great for this process. Yeah, thanks, I'll, I'll leave it there. Yes, thank you so much for, for, for listening to those and. I'm going to try to stay tuned with a bit more of the meeting, but if not, I'll just say best of luck and. And. You know, I'll, I'm, I'm aware of what's happening now, so I'm, I'm going to be. Trying to be a little bit more involved in this as a community member at the very least, so.
Great, thank you, we welcome that. Deborah on online, could you identify yourself and unmute?
Yes, hi, I'm Deborah Messing, is this. A time for public comment?
Yes, we've segued into that.
Okay, excellent, I just have three short comments to make. One is the idea of the single homes. I remember with the White and Burke meetings that there was definitely a consensus that we were not. The community was not interested in single family homes, but I think that. What we envisioned when we thought of that was kind of McMansions or rather than. Any number of more modest options. Small homes, I remember that Stephanie White once as a kind of. Aside said. Oh, yeah, we could have, we, we could have tiny homes and it was never, as far as I know, that was never explored. But I think there's a big interest in single. Smaller homes and tiny homes. So I think that this idea of. The only option for single homes would be large expensive homes. Second, I like the idea of decentralizing. Decentralizing the roads rather than having the one big main thoroughfare and Sandy has addressed that. Another thing is. I don't know if anyone's mentioned the imminent possibility of the. Of the Saban's pasture being developed as senior housing. So on the first stage of that, there's two hundred units, I believe, being planned and. I know that part of the vision there is to supply. Recreation. Sources or that would be suitable for seniors, so when we're talking about. Recreation, I think we ought to. Keep that in mind. Another thing is. The fact that Turtle Island, which I, I'm not sure the stage of the commitment. To have them up at the rec center, but. I mean, up at the Elks Club building, I think that's very exciting and I just found out that they have three hundred kids. On their waiting list. So even if they both have, if they use both the Worcester School and the existing. Facilities at the Elks Club. There's still many, many more kids that could be accommodated. And I would just like to see the city prioritize. Space for them rather than. A private or semi-private membership. Recreation. Facility that the hub is. Is proposing, so I think. I think that's all I have to say.
Yeah, thank you. Other, other comments? From folks in the room? John, go ahead.
John Ray Hill with my architect hat on. As you proceed with this next phase, whatever you call it, and and I'm glad you're talking about it after all these years again, seems like a long time since we began this. I'm really thrilled that you are apparently having a housing study done because I think that's going to make the process. Much easier if you have a discussion about what's needed. First, and then see how this site can accommodate. Because if you don't know kind of what you're shooting for in terms of what types of housing is needed, is any kind of housing fine? Should they be mixed, should they be together, those are questions that you can wrestle with and get public input on and that informs a developer. So that some kind of structure. For the developer, I think is essential, otherwise you're going to be surprised by what you get at the end, it's going to be, oh, that was either a good community or thought of that. So delighted that you're moving along with that process, which I think is going to really help. And I think the same would be true for the rec department if they could back up a little bit and sort of talk about what their needs are. And that, that's something that people can understand and it's, it's a good basis for moving forward with ways to solve that. So I think if, if there's focus on those two, it's going to make this next phase. Much easier and we applaud those, those efforts.
Thank you, John. Steve?
Steve Woodruff again, the. Keep in mind that where the money sources are for affordable housing and homeless services. There's big pots of money that VHB is sitting on, you know, and. I think we need to design around our needs, not around the developers wants and. Especially if we can access funds that might come even sooner. If we can get our planning together, might come even sooner than a growth center and a TIF. We do have water and sewer up there right now, it can't handle a huge expansion. But it's something to consider, I think it's unconscionable to just shoe in. Turtle Island, as much as I applaud their need for emergency space, that may be less dire. Now that they've got an agreement for Dody School as an interim. True, it's further miles, et cetera, but they do have an agreement. And I think Turtle Island would be a better fit down on Saban's as far as. That that steep road going up into Country Club. Is risky for children in the winter to be, I wouldn't. Want my kids driven up and down that road, have you seen the Good Samaritan bus slide off that road into the ditch? The elephant in the room is still. The traffic constraints, the the intersection with Route Two, the railroad crossing, the railroad siding. And we, for some reason, have failed to get our head around it, I think that's something that VHB does professionally. What is the capacity of that intersection and at what point are we trying to do too much? In the event we're constrained by the existing road, there is absolutely no assurance. That the. A new road to Town Hill or through Saban's is going to be allowed to be built. I want to point out that the eighteen million dollar number that's in the actionable plan is absolutely obsolete. It's no longer valid and. My preliminary research on road building costs in rugged terrain like Vermont and like this, these properties. Is more in the. Millions of dollars per mile, so the road alone could be fifteen to forty million dollars, right? For a three mile road, that's whether we come back down through Saban's, but are we planning to destroy what Saban's has in mind by creating a thoroughfare? Through their senior community in, in order to get, to be able to build the high road into Country Club. And this, this is what requires a bigger design like we did for the, the competition. The, that happened some years ago, I think we really need to get back on that big picture because this cannot be designed as an island. So we don't want to create a commuter destination of soccer moms and, and, and. Tennis and pickleball addicts and I, I just think we could ruin the potential of this land to be a nice community for living in. The growth center does, growth center concept and application does require a mix. Of housing, industrial, retail, it can be modest retail like a bodega to supply the people living there. But it, it doesn't need to compete with the downtown, but it could complement the downtown, so. Industrial as well, there should be jobs. In the event, and I've said this before, in the event where traffic constrained to the existing road. We really need to be designing around uses that could generate the least number of trips. People who live there and farm there on those prime ag soils, people who live there and work there at workshops. Seniors who have attend, living their attendant, their attendant care, living in an apartment upstairs. These are low impact and that way most of your traffic will be the sports, sports users. But this is a level of design that we seem to be dodging and and I'm glad to hear other people speaking up and encouraging you to do the. People, architects and engineers say we really need to do the next phase of design, we cannot afford to skip that. So don't allow this memo to lead you down the primrose path.
Thank you, Steve. The, the traffic situation has come up several times, what, what, where are we with that, what, how much study has been done at that?
So during this initial phase of a preliminary traffic assessment was done to evaluate traffic volumes on. Route two that's adjacent, so Vtrans had provided twenty twenty one data, that was what we had available. And so through the process, so basically at this point, Vtrans would require a preparation of a traffic impact study. If there's a generation of seventy five peak hour trips. And so running through a scenario, so the. Looking at that, so basically a single family home generates a zero point nine for peak hour trips in the evening hours. Multifamily housing generates zero point five at a peak hour and so the scenario was broken down like if you had eighty single family homes and hundred forty five multifamily homes. You hit the threshold where you required to do a full traffic impact analysis for that, for this site.
How was the sports generated?
That wasn't fully baked in because it was an unknown program element, so we just did assumptions based on what the national standards are requirements by Vtrans.
Thank you, Mike. Other, other comment, questions?
I have thoughts, I mean, I actually really appreciate the conversation and really appreciate all the kind of points of view. I, again, I think I'll go back to what I said at the beginning of this meeting is that I think we need to keep our eyes on the prize of what are the next steps in front of us, you know, that we, it was, you know. Two years ago that we had, you know, a really robust community engagement process, lot has changed in two years. And yet at the same time, I think there was enough. That was a really robust process that needs to be respected and so. You know, and I'm also just thinking about like our city plan that, you know, was before us right now and the, you know, what I heard repeatedly was the aggressive, a more, a need for a more aggressive housing goal. Right, and so Adrian, I totally agree with you around infill development in our downtown with housing. But I think we need to maximize a lot of housing in a lot of different places and need to have a lot of different strategies to do it and I, so that's a long length of saying. I really. Pretty, I think I pretty strongly believe that. We, we've come up with a couple of different ways of like, you know, I like the idea of looking at the zones, how does the road fit into there, but then, you know, saying we want to maximize a number of housing units balanced with. With the recreation opportunities and I think if there's a way in which we can kind of articulate that that allows flexibility. That allows us to move forward because I think, you know, the truth is projects like this, if they don't have momentum. They die. And, you know, I think that this is an opportunity that we have to keep kind of moving forward and, you know, moving forward with adapting a concept and an actual plan does not put us. On a, on a road that you can't turn around from or that you don't have other opportunities for input, there's a ton. Of due diligence that's going to continue to be needed before shovel gets in the ground. Approving a concept plan doesn't stop that from happening and I would argue actually speeds it up to the point where it could happen. So anyway, I think that it's just, it is challenging because there's, I think, a lot of different ways, you know, to get to Rome, so to speak, but I think. It makes the most sense to me to look at the task before us, what do we need to do to move this forward? I believe it's we need to find a concept plan that we're comfortable with, that's flexible enough, approve it, approve the actionable plan with the different caveats if we need to put that in there. And then, you know, that allows the staff to pursue the growth center designation in the TIF district. So I would just really encourage us frankly, like not to get into the weeds. Like what's the appropriate, like even this, like, I mean, to disagree without being disagreeable, I feel differently about the multifamily, the larger multifamily homes. But that's okay, like that's a conversation frankly that we can have with the entire community. When we see some kind of response to an RFP, but we won't ever. But we won't ever get there if we uh navel gaze.
Good, thank you. Um, Adrian, yeah.
So I think I'm just also kind of thinking like kind of figure this out in my head, but I, I, I want to move forward. I mean, I think it's been two years, we need to, you know, I think the idea of, you know, being perfect is getting, you know, in our way of progress. And what is, what is good enough to move forward? And I think I like the idea of making sure that we have a good design for the um, you know, the growth center application. But I'm, I very much want there to be a public input, especially when we get like actual like designs for people to respond to. Like, I don't know if it has to happen beforehand because that's responding to just another set of designs. I don't know.
I would assume that it's part of somebody help me out if I get this wrong, Mike Willard, I'm looking at you or um, but like uh, I would imagine that as part of the crafting, the RFP, we would really clearly articulate our values and goals as a community. Right? And that becomes, I think, another opportunity for public input. Like as we present or consider an RFP as a council, the public could come in and be like, hey, what you, where are the single family home options in this RFP, right? So I, I do think, you know, I, I really appreciated Brian's point of view of like more design. And yet, at the same time, I feel like there will be opportunities for those conversations. I think we just really need, anyway, I'm sorry to ramble. I just mean, I think we can articulate our values and goals around this parcel through an RFP process that we can then um influence that.
And I think it'd be very clear as to like during that RFP process, that is a good, good time to receive that public input, that the values of the property, that the potential design. I don't, I think that should happen and we should absolutely bake that into the timeline and the plan. Cause we all have different ideas, right? But, you know, what does the community want? What is their input? What do they value? What do, what do they not want to see? Um, cause I think the whole single family home conversation got just totally missed. We missed the mark on that. And so really digging into that, into the RFP process to make sure that, you know, if that's what our community wants, what does that look like? Is it smaller homes, not big lots? But we can, I feel like we can flush that out in the RFP process. Um, and that will still be part of, you know, I think, I want to see robust community input, not just come to city council and come during, you know, whatever public time. But I want to workshop that, go out there and like do some serious efforts to get people, you know, meet people where they're at, rather than inviting them in. And, you know, cause this was two years ago. I don't remember those community meetings that I attended. I don't remember what I said, but now it's the time. It's like ink to paper, let's get it done. This is the reality of what we're trying to get developers to build. Um, but I think, as you said, let's just keep moving this forward, build momentum, have a plan for that community input so that people know that that is part of the process and is part of this, you know, this plan.
I think we can continue, thank you, Adrian. I think we can definitely continue to get community input on RFP, both the formation of it, when the things come back. I think what I really, really worry about is robust community engagement. And then we say, never mind, right? Like we, like, and for me, this plan, yes, two years old, a lot has changed in the world. But this is, you know, the community helped articulate this, this vision. And uh, it feels like we have, I think we have found a place where we could be uh flexible enough or broad enough that accommodates both this vision, the change in the, in conditions on the ground right now and uh also accommodates future public input. Uh, again, I feel like where we'll get off track is um, if we start getting too granular and um, and just bogged down.
Great, thanks. Uh, yeah, Sandy, are you still there?
I am, I have three questions. I may have missed this from the beginning of the meeting, but um, I'm curious why the city is not pursuing an NDA, a neighborhood development area. I know the growth center program is being uh ended. I know they're still taking amendments, but um, you do not have to have any kind of site plan in place to get an NDA. My second question is to be very specific, what? When you say you're going to issue an RFP, is that for developers or for a consultant to do a site plan? And then the third thing is, do I take it from Ben's comments that we are uh, the, the, you're, you're wanting to just keep the road as from, that's, that's number one.
We're breaking up Sandy, we didn't really hear that last question.
From my comments, is it keep the road as it is?
Or is there, you know, I think Sandy was
Sorry about that. Um, it's raining hard here and her driving. Um, so uh, my last question was, do I take it from Ben's comments that he's suggesting that we stick with the road that has been designed so far? I do not think there was a lot of citizen input into that. I understand the logic behind it, but I think there are alternatives and I think it would be a mistake to stick with that access type suburban type road.
Thanks, Sandy. I can't answer the NDA question.
I mean, NDA is going him away, isn't it?
Yeah, it's, it's another one that's going away. It's, it's, it comes down to benefits, different programs have different benefits. The, the, the most amount of benefits and the one that we need is um, in order for us to apply for TIF, we have to have a growth center. Having an NDA means we don't have TIF. So
Mike, what about what happens if um, let's just say we did nothing? And uh, other than identified in our city plan that this is an area that we were interested in future development? And then the land wouldn't presumably, I would assume that when the Central Remond Regional Planning Commission draws the future land use maps, that this would be included in it? And that the Land Use Review Board would approve this as potentially a planned growth area? And would, under a planned growth area, would it have access to a TIF?
Uh, there are two separate buckets. So one bucket is how do we get out of Act two fifty? The second bucket is how do we get TIF?
Right, okay.
What you're talking about is yes, eh, we could wait till we become a tier one A and then we would qualify for
Act two fifty exemption. Mm-hmm.
Um, this, but it doesn't at this time, set us up for TIF.
And we wait, we wait how long for?
But at some point, they're going to have to come up with a new rules for TIF and they haven't
Right, cause they won't, I mean, they won't be making new growth
Otherwise, we would, once this expires, we would never have any eligibility for TIF. So it's anticipated at some point, there's going to be revisions to the TIF rules that say, well, if you're X or Y, you can also apply for TIF.
So you're saying there, there's no TIF uh, there's no avenue to TIF through tier one A currently?
At this time.
Yeah. Well, I, you know, I don't have a whole lot to add to that. I mean, the, the, the purpose of this meeting was not a phase two design. It, it is really, you know, my, my concerns at the council meeting that led to this subcommittee was that um, that there was a degree of specificity in the concept A that I wasn't sure was warranted by the uh, Whitenburg study. And that, in any case, might be perceived by the public uh, as the plan. Um, and so I wanted to see if we could be as broad as possible while still being specific enough to meet the requirements. And I think we've gathered the information we, we need to make, to make a recommendation. I mean, that's, that's remains to be seen in the rest of this meeting. So uh, if there is no further public comment, there's one more comment, Steve.
Option that you haven't considered or heard about is doing both growth center and new town center. New town center helps us get over the problem of non-adjacent to the growth center and uh, creating a village, a walkable village. The con, the, the core concept of growth centers is a walkable village. And this doesn't fit the bill. Whereas a new town center, it would require a, a one liner, two liner in a, in a bill moving before the end of the session that says if you already have a town center, you could also have another one. But what's missing from especially your comments and ironically is the, what has changed most in the last two years is the need for flood resilience location. And we're not going to get to plan Country Club Road as our shock absorber for the next flood if we don't do a master plan that a cut fits that in with all these other needs. And so I just think that even though, oh, also, if you adopt, you're being encouraged to adopt the actionable plan. You can't adopt the actionable plan and dispense with the phase two design, because that's part of the actionable plan, right? So it's true that your task as a subcommittee is not to do or contract, but you could recommend moving forward with an RFP for ex, experts, uh, landscape architects, designers who could do that phase two design or could shepherd that through. And the caution about waiting for the RFP to get public input is the RFP is already out. What comes back in are confidential until there's an award. So nobody really gets to see the various uh, it's under contract negotiations exemptions. So
Now, those would be open to the public, we just put that in the RFP.
Thank you, Steve. Oh, we're doing. Uh, Dave.
Yeah, i- is there any reason that you can't submit multiple, you know, all three of the concepts and then some? If what you're saying is you want flexibility and you haven't really decided what you're going to do? And you're being told that you can do whatever you want in the future, then providing a range of options would address what I think is Sal's concern is you don't want to be tethered to a plan that you put out there down the line. And somebody's going to say, this is what you said you were going to do. Um, if you provide a range of options, you know, as part of the growth center application, then you haven't tethered yourself to anything. You said, we're not sure, but all of these things are possibilities and then some.
Uh, thank you, Dave, I'm not, I'm not um, this is not a definitive response, but my, my sense is that I think we can uh, we can adjust the concept plan such that it's, it's broad enough to uh, to deliver that message without, without submitting all three plans, which uh, really don't, I mean, they don't um, diverge that much other than um, total number of houses and the sort of uh, profit loss profile on the, on the uh, anticipated and estimated TIF. And I, I think the, it, it, it becomes less, less complicated in, in terms of the application if we, if we have the, the single plan. Um, one more comment from Sandy and then we'll break for lunch.
Thank you for taking my uh, question. I do not agree with Mike's analysis about NDAs and growth centers. Um, I'm not a hundred percent sure that I'm correct either, but I am working with Plainfield right now on a neighborhood development area application. And the si, the state is actually encouraging those. I've not heard that that program is ending. As I said, it does not require a design and they are eligible for TIFs. So I, I'm not, I'm, I'm a little confused. And it may be worth just finding that information out from the state for sure.
Thanks, Sandy. Uh, I will close public comment. Uh, the remainder, we're going to go to lunch and the remainder of this meeting is a working session. We won't be taking additional input, uh, but people are welcome to watch us uh deliberate. Thanks for your, your participation this morning. So we will um, we'll go to lunch and, and reconvene after lunch. We are reconvening the subcommittee at whatever time and it's twelve.
Twelve fifty.
Fifty. So, I mean, ideally, we would actually come up with recommendation today that we could hammer out. I mean, it's not essential, but it would need another meeting to actually hammer it out, but um.
I have a thought, can I throw it out there just to like, you know, just reflecting on our conversation? I was thinking one strategy was it seemed like there might have been interest in the, uh, I don't know what they were called, different nodes or zones. The fill, right? And so um,
I kind of liked that idea myself. If that, if that's, I mean, that Mike has to talk to us about, well, and you guys have, depending on what would be acceptable to the
I have two thoughts. One is maybe that zone thing and uh, I don't know. It sounded like maybe we have to identify types of housing in the different zones.
But we could do it narratively. We wouldn't have to picture it. You see, I worry that
I get it.
Not, not just the committee, but people would say, oh, look at this map. That's what we're building and say, ooh, we don't want that or yeah.
Yeah.
And then when we don't build that, we, you know, we hear about it.
Um, I was thinking like that zone thing is one way to go. Or another way to go is say, you know, concept A, but um, w- with uh, greater flexibility for single family housing, you know?
And I think the roads need to be, I mean,
Well, can we talk more about the roads like?
Yes, there seems to be a
Hang up on the roads.
Real emphasis on the roads.
But that's how you design around the roads.
Yeah.
It's okay.
In your professional opinion?
Yeah.
Like what, how flexible are the roads?
I think in this zone, you have some flexibility, but let's peel that back. Cause this really, you can see where those restrictions are.
This is, if you, you've been up there, this is
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I mean, that's ridiculous.
These are, it's size ravine.
Sorry, just leaning over here.
And, you know, the, the pitch on these things is pretty steep, I'm forgetting right now, but I went through all
It's very, very steep.
But yeah, really, taking a road, I can see grades, you have to like work with the contours. You have to parallel the contours, you just can't just shoot up.
Right, there's no grading up here.
I was thinking about the roads in the yellow part.
Down here, you
The yellow part.
You have a lot more flexibility.
Yeah, so like having the roads designed where you could have, because once you, the design of the road is very, very important. Cause then you build the houses on either side as like a neighborhood. But the way that concept A was designed, it was um, you know, kind of like that circle, I felt like it just kind of limited potential. Like over here, like up there kind of, and like this whole runway, right? It's like, is there a better way to like grid?
Are you saying that this is the part that you don't have flexibility?
Yeah, that's
Oh, that's the part you don't have flexibility.
You're saying there's
Yeah.
And how much of this
Okay.
This part do we have to actually show? Don't we really just need to talk about how we will get up there?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I mean, we don't have to lay, lay this out in, the road out in detail now, do we? Are we?
I don't, look at that, that's the statute, that bottom
There may be benefits to Mike's process with the tip. Define the main road is fine, but maybe not the like, they're coming off of it for the development.
That's, that's the key part.
Yeah, I'm a, I'm a big fan of sliding.
So I'm sorry, what was it? It was answered that we didn't, we didn't need to actually show it in a map or?
Uh, for the TIF.
I don't know, Mike, Mike, no, we don't
Here's the statute, irrelevant sections.
One of my, one of my concerns that actually got us was, was the non-inclusion of the, of that western flat area in the um, in the recreation side. And it, you know, it sounded like, I don't know what to make of the recreation departments. I was surprised, it, it seems short sighted to me. It's like, we're okay with what we've got, you know? I mean, and that, you know, I can live with that, but my idea was to, to make it flexible so that
I think it's still flexible.
We can, yes, when, yes, well, it, it, it may bear well be. And when we get, but when we get, I would rather have it when the, the potential developer looks at it, I would rather have it, the emphasis on recreation and have them say, gee, to make this work, we need some of this flatland. So, uh, rather than the other way around, where we're buying back the flat.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So I, but, you know, then I have the testimony of the rec department saying, gee, we're, we're fine. Gee, we're, we're fine.
I, I just, yeah. I feel like. Yeah. I hear you. And I'm not, I don't need to comment on it like you're.
Yeah, I, I don't know. I don't know quite what to do about that.
I.
Was my whole, one of my whole reasons for going through this was to help, was to, to. Temporarily anyway, reserve that or put a high priority on it for recreation because it's the only remaining. Non-flooding flat area in the city.
I agree too.
And then let, you know, if the RFP, if everybody says, no, we can't pencil this out if we don't build, you know, some high-density stuff down there. Then we, we don't make a decision.
But to that point, thinking about them, that space analysis, how they're doing it, like if they see these as rec fields, it would be. Terrible to bifurcate the rec center amenities with the road coming through. Like maybe the road then would want to bend around it so that it sort of preserves your. Fields and spaces wired. Yeah, like maybe use them down like a.
Well, or you could, you could, could you come through this swale? To the left that come up that way?
Uh, I don't think so, because you got, you have big wetland areas here.
So you have to get around that whole wetland area.
Yeah, that's why we got this way and then we came in between these ones.
Coming up, coming up the eastern side doesn't.
Believe there were designs that did show a road that went over that way, but that's.
Was that what you were thinking about?
Well, I, I think it just wrecks potential to recreation.
Yeah, and then it's going through whatever they planned out here.
Their soccer fields and the sliding hill and the, this. Yeah, the, how they're used. Yeah, that's the one piece of soccer field. And then the whole idea of if you increase infrastructure, hooking right to the existing building makes sense. Whatever you use it for, whether it's Turtle Island or, um, pavilions or sports. Yeah, this was the one place we could slide through. In between a lot of the natural resources and not that pitch. And then the things with these were, you know, I tested out the road grades on these as I did it. So we're, we're coming down and that's about. The layout to get you not too steep. And then I tried to slab up into those pods and stuff on either side. And then this comes down.
Yeah. That's the low point right there, isn't it?
Yeah, this, yeah, right here.
Yeah.
And then it comes back up.
Very steep that far.
Yeah, and these, you know. We were mandated to show these connections. That is like ridiculous.
Yeah, that's, that's a grand canyon of it.
Yeah, the expectation is that it's gonna go up to the top.
Way.
Yeah, well, it's gonna go up. You can see where the.
Yeah.
Canyon starts to cut off, it's right at the property line. So whether it's something that we're. Negotiating.
I think that, that's what Mike's talking about.
Yeah, like come that way.
Yeah, then there's no bridge.
And this was the sort of the whole rec. Idea in that sense. That was the whole rec, thinking about how to use, something about parking inventory spaces to accommodate ballfield use. Soccer games, kids' events. Geez, I forgot all about.
Yeah, so mine.
But we did, we did extreme, extreme left and extreme right.
Wow.
So there's a, there's a, um, one of those blob photos, you know, buildable and. Like the area, area B photos, there's, there's one that shows. Area A, I think. And it's a, it's a, maybe it's a three-part. There's this, this and that. And this says recreation. And this says multi-family or recreation. And I wonder if we can. Go to something like that. Where. That would done sense. I was thinking of one that actually had two little blobs there, but what is that?
Buildable area A level and open contiguous to developed area. Limited natural resource re. Restrictions except prime ag soils. This is relates a little bit too to the prime ag soil litigation you're talking about. So I, I think, um. For the purposes of conversation, like I think we should keep it this way. And I think like still have, you still have the flexibility of like when reality sets in and what we get back. Right? And, um, I mean, this is the, I don't, I don't mean to sound snarky when I say this, but it's like, we have a housing crisis. Right? Like not a recreation crisis.
I understand.
You know, and, uh, and like my kids play soccer up here and I, you know. It's like, I think, I feel like this provides adequate recreation right now. The rec department says that it does. Would they take more if they, if all things being equal? Absolutely. And if we had more to give, we would, right? But I feel like for the purposes of, again, what we're trying to do today, I think just. You know, recognizing that, as we've said all along, like nothing set in stone, but for a working model, let's, you know. Put enough on the bones that they, we can do something. No, anyway, I guess that's a long way of saying I'm comfortable with how the recreation is laid out now.
Yeah, I would extend this though.
Yeah.
To cap this. To get the sliding hill.
I mean, I'd be fine with that.
Yeah, it's a heck of a resource to lose. And. You know, I don't, uh, as long as you can apply with the things, I don't think those bubble diagrams. Showing a, a road leading to areas. And then you, you have a, here's a pod, here's a pod, and if you go out to developers, they can say, well, I'd like to build this in that pod. And then you'll hear that stuff back from them on what the actual product is.
Generate more creative.
Yeah, versus, it's gotta be townhomes. We don't do those, so forget it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't think we want to specify.
No.
What goes where.
I think it's distracting.
But what do we have to specify? Do we have to specify like number of units and then like?
Certainly as we get our way to tip.
Right.
We're gonna need to have enough. And we've just been going by dwelling units as our ballpark number. You know, we know if we build two ninety-two. It works, um, and we have buffer, which means costs go up. You know, we were gonna collect thirty-two million dollars in TIF revenues. With this, as with this design, it was thirty-two million, again, all estimates. Once you take out financing costs, because we have to pay. Interest on those. We're down to twenty-four million and the construction of infrastructure came in at eighteen point eight. So, and that doesn't count the fact that we're looking for grants to pay for. Five to ten million of that. So we, we got those grants and that means we also haven't accounted for putting in. Water and sewer, um, fees or anything else. That's just, just TIF. We've covered it and we have six million dollars left over. That's. That's good. I don't know. We've got some room if we're, if we're missing on, if we've missed a mark on some, we're good. Have to work our way down to.
That's based on two ninety-two.
That's based on two ninety-two. As we get down, you saw in the report. It, it gets that, that number, the infrastructure cost doesn't change.
Right.
But the amount of money we're generating keeps getting tighter and tighter. So. There's room to. You know, as I say, as to lose here, but if, if there was like, let's, you know, call this a pod down here and right now, if we could ju- just call it a pod and said we'd have whatever numbers are in that pod. Estimating. A hundred and sixty housing units in this area.
In the, the pod, when you say pod, we're, the zone is the.
Yeah, in the, yeah, in the zone, in zone A. Zone A, we're, we're anticipating, and again, we could still be general, we're anticipating a hundred and sixty-eight units, multi-family dwellings. Multi-story and a developer could come in and say, well, I'm gonna put a hundred down here because I'm gonna do smaller, but up here where you're talking about needing. Forty-eight units, I'm gonna do sixty. Because I'm not gonna do townhomes, I'm gonna do something else which had more. And so from a tip standpoint, that's where we get into working with the developers on the back and forth of, alright. Or maybe the RFP is only talking about, we're just doing RFP on bottom, we'll do a future RFP for the top.
Well, yeah, so that's an important thing too here, right? Because this, this is all. Based, right?
Yes. Yep. And that was what the reason, and I think I've mentioned this before, I'll mention it again.
Yeah.
The reason we targeted the number two hundred was because this would be enough infrastructure. There's be enough increment to pay for all the infrastructure. So once we have this and if we hit our targets on this. We could build whatever we want up here because the amount of money coming in is sufficient to build the. The road all the way out to through Savin's pasture. And all the infrastructure up here, it covers everything. If we're hitting about two hundred housing units, which is why.
Our, our four or five-story building, I don't think that's the only way to get the.
I don't know. That's, that's where we kick into the developers to come in and say, you know, could they, well, that's a wet one there, but could they come in and say, well. If we had a little bit more over here, which wouldn't be what you want, or if we had. You know, uh, if we could have access up here, or maybe they just come in and say, here's what we can do. We can do your two hundred, but it looks like this. I can also do your, I could do it also to one sixty. We think as the developers, it looks better. And would be more marketable for us, but you're gonna miss your target and you'll have to make that up in phase two.
So we ran these numbers in twenty twenty-three and now it's twenty twenty-five with the world that's falling apart. So. I mean, just thinking about those grants and like what do you, what is even of, I mean, I work in a world where all of our federal grants are gone, like just. Gone, like zeroed out. And so, I mean, what about this world, right? So are those grants can even be available? Like, I mean, with the developers and thinking about their cost and the equations for TIF, like. Is there a way to run or talk to developers and figure out like in twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six, what do those numbers look like? So I feel it's. I feel like in twenty twenty-three, it may be outdated just because the world has changed so much, but once again, this is a different world than where I live.
That might be getting ahead of what we need to decide here though, right? I mean.
Okay. That's fine.
Well.
I don't know.
I mean, how would, how would knowing that inform?
I was thinking like the tip application. That's what I was thinking.
But we can't even get there until we have the concept approved, right? Like, I mean, at some point.
We'll have to get to those numbers. Yes.
Okay, so the Whitenburg report assumes we're not getting any grants.
Okay, alright.
So. If we get grants, that's just great.
Of course.
We have assumed.
Is this?
Not getting grants.
This is a very buildable area, I think. What's wrong with this?
It's primag and it's.
Well, we'll be out back to fifty, so that eliminates.
I mean, I, I don't. I've, I've, I've walked up and down this, this is, this is a hill.
Yeah.
It's a hill, 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 and then it's a real hill.
Yeah.
A mountain. And. You, you, you would have to do a lot to really make that into a playable. You know. Athletic field. And I'd rather put housing there, which you could easily do with roads across, you know, across the hillside. And. And move some of this activity over into the flatter area, which is, which is literally just there already.
Okay.
I think what we're, I think what we're doing.
Yeah.
So.
The flatter area, we were looking for bigger stuff on.
Yeah, no, it's easy. It's flat. It's there.
And that could easily be.
That's why.
Cottage development with gridded streets.
Yeah, I know, I love.
That's why we needed other stuff.
That's the one place you could do it.
Yeah. So let's think about what is exactly required. So what we want to leave with today. Is a recommendation to council of what is, what, what can we say, what is required for the first step is the growth center application.
I think what we, if we take. The pod zone, but whatever we're called bubble.
Yeah.
If we take those and specify numbers of dwelling units. In each of those, based on actually what we have in this drawing, but like not specifying what type of home it has to be or what it looks like. Just as long as we hit the dwelling unit numbers and then we provide a narrative that says. We're looking to balance, you know, this level of housing, uh, with our recreation goals. Recognizing that there's flexibility and opportunity for creativity, like, is that enough, Mike? Can we get through with that?
I mean, I can work. I can work with you to kind of get the language tweaked into. Into form that would kind of work to do that. At, that kind of exercise, because I think we can. Like I said, I think the, the key is if we've got the road. Located where, where we're comfortable with the road going, even if it's just general, as I said, I think I had mentioned to. Council, I don't know if I mentioned to you guys, like, I just like labeling the road.
Right.
General location of the road to be determined by the exact location to be determined by the developer. But it gives me enough to mark this mark, mark this out and go through and say, well, that's.
Well, we know that this road.
Two thousand two hundred feet of roadway and here's our.
So we would call these pods the buildable areas. That to me is a good enough, is a great term. We already have that term and we already have that, you've already done that. We've identified those as discreet areas. So I think that's a good way to.
Having on the natural resource restrictions as well. You know, we have pretty much one of those almost done. You might want to think of how you identify the density, because I mean, the way we thought was, you know, built hardcore recreation stuff. To a higher density unit and then, then it goes low as you spread out on the more challenging terrain and why you wouldn't want somebody to go, I'm gonna build. These giant ones here, you know, maybe like, oh, it'd be sticking up there in the air and.
But developers might see some value in building, um. Multi-story, not five stories into a hillside with, you know, parking under or there's a number of ways they could. They could do it. So it's not out of the question that they, that higher, some higher density stuff couldn't go up there.
But the highest density stuff would.
I suppose.
Be located. Most likely.
I mean, it sounds like we have to depict the size and placement of the buildings, but we don't have to like write.
Not, not specific.
You know.
Like what? Yeah.
I think we have to, we have to show the buildable areas.
Yeah.
And, uh, suggest the level of density required in those areas.
Statute language right.
Right here, it says a concept plan depicting the character of the streets and public spaces within the growth center and depicting the size and placement of buildings envisioned in the municipal plan. And the second one is existing and planned public facilities, including public buildings, public spaces, wastewater, water services, roads, sidewalks, paths, transit centers, parking areas, parks and schools within the growth center boundaries. So we have to still be somewhat specific, but still we want to be. Broad. So it's like a little bit of a.
Well, when they say depict it, they don't mean literally, I mean, depicting usually is an illustration.
Yeah. So I think that's where we're like the broad part of it.
They want an illustration of all of that? I can't believe it. I mean. You don't have that for.
Yeah, and as I said, this, as we've laid things out here, this was, this is.
It was approved.
It got rejected on, technically, it didn't get rejected on this. It wasn't in the city plan.
It's still not in the city.
It will be. That's why they're having this exercise, so they know what picture to put in the city plan.
So this got approved.
But, and I think, as I said, we can get more general. And, and go with, because remember, we're talking about placement. If you were to look at this entire site. What's the placement of buildings? We're gonna have large multi-family structures in pod A. Resulting in. Approximately a hundred and sixty to two hundred houses. And. In pod B. We expect, you know. Buildings of this type. So they're not, they're, they're placed. They're not specifically placed on the exact location of a street of exactly what building and exactly what type, but they're placed. In context with, these are bigger, these are medium, these are smaller as you work your way out, those might be.
So we, we would actually be saying that.
Could you just say higher density?
Well, I was, yes. I was gonna, yeah, I was gonna say, so if we, if we have a range of the number of units that we foresee for this area, we would, we could say that it would be likely the, the location of. The largest multi-family structure.
Highest.
We don't have to say, yeah, highest density. We don't have to say five story. We can just say, if there are, uh, high-density structures, they're more likely to go here than elsewhere.
Yes, and then developer may come in with two large buildings up against the back here with medium-sized buildings across.
Yes, right. They could do a whole bunch of different.
There's a lot of options they could.
And presumably the road could go around too, right? I mean, it could go further west.
Yeah, it could, it could.
A little, it's a little more.
And Mike, within your number, do we necessarily need to identify? The number of units per pod or just the plan in general? Like here's the, you're, you're seeking two hundred and seventy-five units. And you don't have to say fifty are happening here, seven are happening there.
Yeah, we don't have to be.
Leave it open and flexible, um, but then that number does help you inform, like think about the infrastructure, right? How big is the sewer main coming in, water supply? Do you need to convert to three-phase power, like the electrical, the infrastructure? Because you need to have certain volume size, you know, facilities to.
And the larger, the larger buildings, if you're talking about the potential of five-story buildings, then we also need to bring in the potential. Yeah, and the larger, the larger buildings, if you're talking about the potential of five-story buildings, then we also need to bring in the potential of enough water. To supply sprinklers for a five-story building, it's not just water use, you're not talking about getting sprinklers up. Sixty.
And it also depends on the phasing, if we wanted to, if we absolutely wanted to reduce the risk to as close to zero as we could. Then we could insist on five-story buildings here, because it pays off, or we could say. We'd we'd like to see some options that don't require buildings quite that large, but. Achieve this, the same density spread over a slightly larger area and a slightly larger timeline. Which I would like to leave that possibility.
Yeah.
Yeah. I'd still like to have a, you know, some recognition that we wouldn't, you know, it wouldn't kill us if we had some recreation.
Uh, it absolutely would not, it absolutely would not.
And I'd like to have that in the. In what we put in the the growth center concept, so that we don't have to buy it, we can graciously. Uh compromise later, if we have to.
I would agree, I mean, I feel like we need to keep, there's the fields that are gonna flood.
Try and keep it as long as we can, that's what I'm. And again, we're saying, we're not saying it absolutely has to be this way, we're saying.
I think this is honestly, I feel, I don't really have a problem with that, if we want to put that language in there, because for me, this is gonna be. Determined by what can pay for the infrastructure, and if you can have like another. Uh, another park or field in the set, like, great, but like.
Yeah, I'd like to communicate that need to the developer, that, you know, this is the last. Flat, non-floable piece of land in the town, and can you keep it? Can you, can you work around it, or somehow, you know, I mean, somehow make it work?
I think as long as it's flagged on on, not necessarily the final concept, or but another map that goes through and identifies where, like. Here's where there's a flat area that could serve, that way at least it's a, you know, there's a spot here, and there's a spot here. These we were, the council recognizes as. As potential valuable areas for additional recreational utility, and the answer might be, yeah, we can do that as long as these are five-story buildings. And then you have a decision that's like, alright.
I'm fine with that, I'm fine with that, too.
Maybe they come back and say, no.
Adrian, you go over there?
I'm not, I just hate those five-story buildings, but. I just don't envision what I'm gonna be overruled, so.
But it could be, we can make it, we'd have to build on that land, and they'd be three to four-story buildings.
So you could build one twenty stories.
I think we can do it differently, I don't think you have to go up, I think you can, I don't know, but I'm not the designer.
Are the hillside then buildable on that? Where's the boundary? Oh, there it is, yeah, that's pretty steep, isn't it?
It drops like it's stone.
Now, I have one more comment about that area, which is, I think it's, it's a a little bit. Easy to miss, but that black line that connects in the bike path, uh behind all those big buildings.
Oh, this one?
This?
Yeah, going the other way. That really is the best connection to the existing like that. Sorry, I was late, maybe we discussed that earlier.
No, I didn't.
But it would make, it would like logical sense for that to arrive, not on the rear end of a huge building. Just as 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 we develop an RFP, or at least to make it into the language, maybe this is too in the weeds for right now, but. That is an important recreational connection that ties into walkability and viability, uh it's much better than going all the way up to.
I mean, I think for the purposes of today, to get this plan into a place where we can put it in the growth center. I mean, I'm fine with, because we'll have negotiations once we get to.
And I I like the idea of identifying a density and then letting the developers figure out what the market bears that.
Because people have no idea.
I mean, when they actually build something five years from now, these stakes could be totally.
You don't know.
Yeah, and you know, there's a big move for the whole tight cottage clusters.
I know.
Yeah. Whole different concept.
Yeah.
Now you're giving away our flood reserves.
I mean, the cottages, I mean, that's what people around this country are talking about, um but it'll come down to the development, what the market is, you know. And that's still a couple of years away.
You mean, housing versus saving it for recreation?
No, no, I'm talking about designing, if you hand it to the developers. They're not gonna design a shock absorber for our next downtown floods, we have to define. Space that can be used for our dispatch, our fire trucks, our emergency shelters, you know, and that you don't get that from a developer.
So I I think we we're we're getting.
Think we're really close.
We're getting close on this stuff, we're getting.
I think so.
We we're gonna identify the bu- buildable areas instead of.
Sketch out.
Yeah.
Expanded recre.
Instead of dropping buildings, I'm just trying to kind of do that with narrative in terms of density and.
And are we gonna get the flooding hill?
Yep, yeah, preserve the setting.
Gotta keep the flooding hill.
Well, there's no. Over there, you just have to hike over there.
But we also talked about the housing that could go over here.
Could you get a road across the top of the flooding hill to access over into that?
That's what I was thinking. Because it was in the original, so we don't lose that housing.
Malone.
Connor and then Malone. Alona first and then Connor.
Wait, I'm sorry, thi- but this is, this is still a country bug.
Oh, yeah, yeah, oh, yeah.
Yeah, this is, this all is, in in the past, I know some of this was in um current use. So I'm not sure if if that's still the case, and if it is, that's just something else we'd have to deal with, so.
What's current use mean?
Uh, that's the.
You don't pay taxes on it.
You don't pay taxes on it, but you have to manage it, but in order to get out of current use, you've gotta go pay penalties.
I know, it it's a matter of can you get from here to here?
Oh, yeah, because snake it down, and yeah, I mean, you may have to, yeah, you may get some things in here. We got rope tow on that sledding hill.
Yeah, that's right.
And then in this, the buildable area, we we would mention the recreational.
That would be so fun.
You see this pad? You want it to come down along this?
It's already on there, it's the black dotted line.
Oh, that is.
He wants to change the orientation of the building.
Yeah, yeah.
Really the best option, and and I didn't, connecting up definitely, I think that. Being recreational facilities in there.
It's more, yeah, just making sure that it's recognized that this is where there's gonna be people coming up, and do we want them coming up to the back of something? Building, or can these buildings be moved, but I think that's something. Kind of specific for the design, but good to know.
Piece of the times or.
Yes.
Buildable or, buildable, or can we call it that?
There's like three different words where you're using to describe.
Let's start with buildable areas, okay, thank you.
It was very confusing. Thank you.
And were we not capturing more recreation in that?
We are gonna try to indicate that it's.
Potential.
Potential recreation.
Handle it in the terminology, do you want to show it graphically, or do you want to handle it with language?
I think I think we need to at least show where those pieces are.
The two flat areas.
This flat area.
That'd be the whole nine that you referenced earlier, is that right?
Well, it's, yeah, it's out, all the way out to the storage shed.
Yeah, yeah, so, yeah, it falls along that.
And then there's the ravine, which is one side of the, well, it's right where this pond is almost.
Oh, yeah.
So there's a flat area beyond it, yeah.
So you want this to say potential recreation or buildable area?
I don't think the whole thing.
It's, it's gotta be a buildable, I mean, I.
It's a buildable area, and it's also.
Slash recreation.
Eventually a recreation. For additional language, or optional recreation.
Yeah. I think it's a buildable area, like we've agreed that they're gonna be.
No, no, it's a buildable area.
And then, like, that we're.
Moments ago, you were.
No, I'm I'm down with it, yeah, yeah, but to me, yeah, but I think it's important, right, because it's not, to my mind, it's not. Buildable, you know, housing units for recreation, it's housing units with the opportunity for additional recreation at the.
But I refer to my, let's not give it away yet, let's try and preserve it now and give it away later if we have to. So I'm happy to call it a buildable area, but I want the recreation on equal footing for now. Until the developer says, can't do it, can't make that work. I don't think they're gonna just throw up their hands and say, I'm not interested, because you.
Yeah.
Is that a developer?
I had a lot of slides.
The slutty one, I think that'll be important to keep, because.
So how do we decide?
That's kind of a cool feature.
I know, well, if you're in a neighborhood and the kids wanna go study, I mean, that's, you know, you gotta think of the things that are gonna draw people to this and. Want to buy these houses.
How do we determine the den- the densities of these various areas? I mean, we kind of, do we know what the maximum is that they would support? If you're.
Wow, I can tell you how I did these, was, they, we mentioned this is gonna be a townhome style. And I did the road to ten-foot contours, I picked an elevation here, matching natural terrain, I checked it out underneath, so I know every one of these. These would be uphill plus ten to zero, these would be zero minus ten.
And downhill.
Yeah, and they're hitting on the natural contours, so I know those are buildable units. But that told me in that pod, this is how many I could get in there if I was right now working for the developer. In that style of how. We, I kind of like to test them out that far, that's probably how this got to be looking like a real plan. Versus just of area, because you can circle something and just by acreage and say. This is that, but the reality is, when you start dealing with the real contours, what you can do, it's not Iowa, you know?
Yeah, yeah.
You gotta.
So those, you're saying, you're saying that that represents the maximum density there?
Unless you wanna, I mean.
Still in between those?
Yeah, unless you wanna put them ten feet apart, which they were doing in South Burlington recently.
What, those are groups of what, three or four?
Yeah, three and forty.
So if you went to groups of six or something, um. I'm just asking, it's prohibitive.
Yeah, I was just trying to keep, what is scales, this looks like.
One to a hundred.
Thirty to forty feet in between.
Yeah, no, we want to be realistic, we have to come up with minimum and maximum, or something.
We know with the fire truck hammerhead on the ends of them. Me, yeah, something like this, you could put something in the middle, but. Didn't seem like real fun place to have.
And how difficult is it to uh divide that into small lots for a single family, or like cottage homes and stuff? That, those areas, those buildable areas?
Not very difficult.
Not difficult, so there's. The housing doesn't determine the housing type.
No, I mean, you all, yeah, yeah.
Could we just calculate the number of units currently shown on this and just call it build number, the number of units?
Because I think, once again, we just have to get these requirements, we're not dictating what type of housing, what the style of housing, like. We just have to make sure that we're, once again, the character of the streets and publics.
That's why I was asking earlier, do we need to actually identify how many units in that pod, or can Mike just run with an overarching number for the?
Well, in a way, we, it does, I mean, if we, if we use the numbers that we depicted here, this is gonna be the biggest, right? And so.
Yeah, hundred ninety-six units, yeah.
It's going to bias it toward larger multi-story buildings, which is fine, but unless we have. Minimum and maximum or range in each. I mean.
We have to depict the size and placement of buildings.
But num- if we put numbers, well, in this, in the growth center thing, if we put numbers on, I don't think it matters, but if the RFP, if we put numbers on it. Then we're, we're actually biasing it one way or the other.
Yes.
Now, we're not.
Yes.
But, you know, six months from now, it could be a completely different council, and saying, oh, you guys decided on this, so this is what we're gonna do.
Who's doing your gridded?
I know, sorry, I'm from New Jersey, I like the grids.
Flexibility and the density, but we're not biasing it.
New York City. I just know these suburban neighborhoods.
Well, that could be nice down here.
But that's high density, and I think if that's the way we keep it, it's high density, we do have to depict the size and placement of buildings, but. I think we still keep it.
We can do that in narrative.
Yeah, I think we just do it in narrative, yep.
We we don't have enough.
No. And I think everything else in terms of public facilities, public buildings, public spaces, wastewater, water services, roads, sidewalks, paths. Transit centers, parking, parks and schools, I mean, are we able to check all those off? That's what we want to make sure we do, because that's what is required for the growth center application.
I'll be listening to that, man.
Uh, yes.
What is the answer to that question?
Um, I think that will be in that and there.
Yeah, I mean, this addition, again, the growth center is an expansion of the existing growth center. So some of those are, how much of this is being already accounted for in the existing growth area, how much of this is being accounted for in the expanded? We only have to talk about the expanded growth there, so a portion of this is already accounted. Go through and line by line go through, and in some of these cases, it's not gonna matter, because, you know, we already have schools are. Um, not, there's no, there's not demand for additional school space, so.
Until you handle that, you're changing your narrative.
Yeah, we would handle that in narrative, yeah, outpatient question, so, why aren't we addressing the school, school capacities, because there, there's not a school capacity. We've communicated that with. The uh superintendent. Somewhere here, do that.
Good question. I feel like there's a missing buildable area where all the nicest views are, like, I think that one on the right captures a lot of the nicest views, or the, no.
This?
Yeah, a really, oh, on the top of the property, I understand there's two wetlands there, but it seems like there's opportunity to build right along that top edge. A lot of like really.
Here?
Yeah, exactly, and skip over the wetlands and buffers, or just do what you need to do to build the buffers.
Yeah, I mean.
But that, that's some of the nicest, that would be some of the nicest places that have, like, right in that area.
No, and we had, this is like our neighborhood gathering, I mean, good capture. Yeah, under this, you know, you could do some things here and probably there.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that is another buildable area, right?
It's, it's like one building.
One, but, yeah.
I mean, I think what we are trying to do with these was not have people right on the road that was circulating to the. You know, that would be like a neighborhood of them.
Oh, we did have a couple here.
We wanted to start in greasing. I think we did this one, because we thought. It did have good views, it'd be a cool mini park.
Yeah.
Where people from all these things, if they wanted to get a favor or really do that or something.
And there's one road here instead of two, because.
Well, this is all the.
That's the wetland, of course.
Okay.
I mean, that we can test out, see if you can get access to this. I mean, you could come over the top.
I mean, it is a buildable area, it's, it's, it's wooded, it's wooded now, it's not cleared, everything else is clear.
Yeah, I think, you know, what we were trying to do in all these schemes is provide you with a bunch of options for all the areas. That it wasn't like a set, this is what we think the best, what it should be. So I think in this one, there was some comments in the public things that there should have been some passive recreation area, where it was just woods and trails. So that was, that was kind of a hard area to get to, it was, you know, you gotta disrupt this to get to it. So we kind of said, okay, that's good passion, it hooks into a lot of woods. Thinking, you know, I like the idea of this road, hugging the. Thinking, you know, I like the idea of this road, hugging the outside edge, and you can save this. For whether you do big buildings, or you do the gridded cottage thing. You could have an open space piece that connects to your recreation area. So everybody in here can then just don't have to cross. The road that, that's going up there to the other houses. You know, they can just go down their little streets or.
Yeah, I like the idea of going around, going through.
And then if it, you wanted for some reason to be more soccer fields, it doesn't disrupt that with a road through the middle of it.
Oh, yeah. I think there's a little soccer field. Concept C, so it's like a mixture of taking that, yeah, and kinda going around.
This project was a frustrating experience for me.
Still is. I mean, look where we are now. I mean, oh, my God. Okay, so do we feel like we have what we need to accommodate the requirements of the growth center applications with this updated?
I think, personally, I think, yeah, I think that's up to Mike, right? Like, if he's telling us what he needs from us, it's like an approved concept plan to put into the actual plan to go forward with growth center designation, a TIF thing, like.
But the TIF is gonna require like way more specific, so.
And he's gonna tell us what it needs and.
What that is, how we're gonna do it.
It's gonna need to, it's gonna be a two-step process. The first step is to go in and apply for the TIF. And get ourselves in the door, but we won't, it's gonna have to go to a bond home. At some point, and that's where you have to have the developers' concept plan. Yeah, there's gonna, so there's gonna be two steps. One is going to. Developers already given us the plan. We know exactly what they're building. This is exactly what they're doing. This is exactly what the infrastructure is. The BFC board would look at it and say, well, you know, we'll have our third-party independent person look at the same numbers. I mean, we've, we've been through this before to get our original TIF.
And how do we sandwich in a, an additional, uh, you know, planning period? Where we get more detailed input on. Types of housing, um, other, other facilities, parks. They care. I mean, how do we, how do we sandwich in something that? Enables us to come up with a needs and wants statement that we could then incorporate into an RFP? And then here with the developers, how they respond to it.
That would have to be as we get into the, get towards the RFP process. I think the specifics of what go into the RFP will be. Probably that next to them. We'll go through this, the growth center needs to get us into the growth center. There's gonna be some outreach, obviously, for the TIF part. Um, and we'll just have to see how specific.
Because the tip has to be pretty specifically. Much more specific.
Yeah, there's gonna be, and that's, that's the juggling act of. You get, you get the TIF, and then we've got to go and apply for the actual TIF project. I'll have to work with DEPC to see how that. What the best process is for that. Do, do we actually need to do the RFP before the TIF? My understanding, working with White and Burke is, because White and Burke's been doing all the TIF applications, so I'm less. Less in tune to the very, very specifics of that application. Because that's why everybody pays White and Burke. But they've always said, no, we'll get the TIF and then we'll put this out to bid. They have a process whereby we would go through, get our TIF approved, but we don't have the ability to get money. We then have five years to go through and start getting specific. Then we go back to DEPC to go through and say, here's our plan, here's all the members. But we would then need a bond both from the public, say, yes, we are gonna bond for sixteen million dollars. The proceeds of which will be paid.
So you're saying it's five years after?
We have five years after the TIF is created. Which was the piece we were running into with. The existing TIF that we had and savings pasture and reappraisal is. We didn't have a window after the reappraisal to jump in, so that's why we said, if savings want to build, you can build now. But we need an application now that says it's ready to go. It wasn't ready to go, so we pulled the TIF. And now we've got reapply for it.
And if this is. How does all that affect the timeline as you've been? What, what does it delay do? Delay of a year do to this? Particularly given the current climate. I mean, these guys are talking about developers who have no work and have no. Prospects because it's just expensive. Nothing's penciling out at the moment, just sort of waiting to see what happens.
At that point, it is, it is what it is. I mean, I think we can do what we can, we can do on our end to try to make stuff work. So we can go through, do our, do our growth center, get that approved, get ourselves ready for team uh. Tier one A status. Build our TIF application, get that put in. That gives us a, a five-year window. Um, we could put an RFP out. Nothing says you put an RFP out, nobody bids because everybody's on the sidelines because it's the great recession number two. Then, you know, no fault of our council, it's no fault of anybody.
Well, we're not trying to get under, under a wire right now. I mean, we. After we're doing that, we can proceed with these other pieces. Uh, and see what happens. Yeah.
I'm, I'm just, I'm pushing forward because. That's been my trajectory. So I'm gonna go, you know, everyone's like, we, city takes too long to get these projects done. I'm like, I can get this project going in twenty twenty-six. We just need direction. We just need to have this. That's, that's the mission now, but if council and, and everybody says, I think we're gonna pump the brakes on this, we're gonna take a year off.
Yeah, I'm not suggesting that we do that. I'm just.
Thinking we'd get the next year. We would get through the growth center, we'd develop the TIF application and get ourselves in a place where we've got a five-year window. Pull the trigger. We've got a developer who's like, it's gonna take me two years to get all my permits in order. Get my financing in order, get everything ready. I'm willing, I'm willing to sign up for your project. Knowing that it may not happen for. And we might be like, great, we'd rather have somebody. Who's working on this project. And then all those due diligence steps that we skipped out on, that we said, that's left to the developer. They might be spending their two years doing additional due diligence, doing additional whatever, keeping an eye on market. When's the market ready? Cause I can't, I'm not gonna build if the market's not there for me to make a profit.
Fantastic. I look forward to it. We can, we can do it on the recreation fields. I'll meet you there at dawn. Meanwhile, can we just get the, can we get the unit numbers for the buildable areas? People, I feel like if the two things we needed to do were the road, I mean, it seems like everybody's happy with this. Like, does your recreation opportunity thing, it helps with the orientation of the buildings for people coming up from the. I mean, this feels good. Flexibility, what could happen.
Yeah, and the existing density seems fine at this stage.
So then, I mean, I, again, I would say, is it not appropriate to calculate? We don't wanna do pictures. So if we just calculate the number of units that these pictures. Capture and then just put it in numeric form. Then, is that, I mean, and then explain it in narrative that we're like, good news. You know, we want high density in this area, a little bit less density here in this area. We wanna preserve maximum flexibility for recreation opportunities, and we look forward to seeing what the universe provides us with for options.
Cause the council was getting caught up, remember during our council meeting was, well, if we send this in with the growth application, this is what we're on the hook for. So this. I know, but that perception, but this kind of removes that perception while still allowing. You know, the numbers, the roads, meeting all these requirements.
Public perception.
What was the unit number you had for the, your cost scenario that you're running for the increment?
Uh, it was run for all three concepts, A, B, and C.
Like Mark just sketched out like cottage clusters, so there's thirty-eight units there. And if you assume you did this sort of townhome style up there, there's ninety-six. But I guess you had a hundred and like, you know, just under a hundred and forty. The challenge though, right, is like, we, we need to have that higher, like, if we're phasing this, we're not doing it all at once, right? So we need to, unless the city is going to look for some other kind of revenue stream to pay for the infrastructure costs. We have to have enough here to cover the increment.
And what is the enough?
Sunset Day was two hundred and ninety-two units. Now, again, we're just talking generic units. If you're building two hundred and ninety-two tiny homes, you're not generating the same income as two hundred and ninety-two. Four-bedroom homes.
This is where housing needs assessment.
So two, it was ballpark, middle of the road, two hundred and ninety-two units for its concept A. Two hundred and sixty-eight units with concept B, one hundred and eighty-four units with concept C.
Well, I'm sorry, Mike, but that's the total number of units in the entire, right? Do we have one for the high-density area? Where we have currently in concept A, the.
I know it's in this.
Yes, right here.
Was depicted there.
So again, we could go down to like one fifty. It would just mean we're gonna have to pay for this infrastructure up here in some other way. Or a portion of that infrastructure in some other way, right?
Yeah, by either increasing more development up the hill or by reducing the cost somewhere else or getting some grants or. Any number, but we know a hundred and eighty-four of concept C. Was enough, just barely breaking.
What are the chances that we'll sell all those? If they're, if it's all the same thing, my only choice is an apartment or a condo in a five-story building. Do, do they, or do we need a mix from the get-go in, in location? Is it, is it realistic to think that we can just build four or five-story buildings or whatever? And sell them all and pay for our infrastructure?
Well, I think we should look for the housing needs assessment, right? And I think when we're looking at the vacancy rate, yeah.
Cause I don't, yeah, it just seems unlikely that.
But it's just sound like it's, if you. Yeah, and we should, we don't need to decide to say, right? But like, but like, if we just think about it, like, we need this level of density. To cash flow the infrastructure to build out parts that are less dense. But if we do a mixture of this stuff and high density, like, if we mix it up. It's not cash flowing to pay for the other infrastructure, right?
Well, it is if we.
If we did it all at once.
If it doesn't sell, it's not.
Then the housing needs assessment will help us determine.
And you sell four buildings worth of.
What do you guys think? You think you could sell?
No, I mean, that won't pay for anything, so.
Well, I think, as Steven mentioned, two years ago is a whole different economic. Who knows what stuff costs now? There's that, but, I mean, around the Williston area, they can't build those apartment things fast enough. We got guys in our office that are in those. You know, their apartments, the younger people and whatnot. And everybody else is like, don't sell anything you own right now, cause you're never getting anything else.
I think whether the three-story, four-story, five-story, whatever, we're gonna need a certain chunk of these that are apartments and apartment buildings. We have, we have a lot of people. We can't just think about, well, we're gonna build cottages. We, we have a homelessness problem. We have a rental problem. You can't build a bunch of cottages and go and say, I don't understand why they're not buying any of these houses, getting off the street. But they're not. We need to be having a mix of housing types that include rentals and other options that will help.
These were homeless cottages.
No, but that's what I, that's what I mean. We can't be going and thinking, oh, we will build all the cottages and that will solve our housing issues that we have.
No, I'm not saying, I'm saying I think we probably need to mix. I, it's hard to believe we can sell all, all, we can build and sell. One kind of thing, one kind of housing. And, and.
The big buildings, people aren't gonna build the big buildings and sell all the pieces. I mean, there may be some of them that are condos, but. Some of them are just gonna be rental apartments.
So.
What do we need to do?
We need to put in some ballpark numbers in the buildable areas. I, we're all kinda happy with the road, right?
That's fine.
For now? So it's numbers in the buildable areas. And I would, I would encourage us to, the starting point being like, just calculate what we've got already on the map. Well, this one you just said, Mike, right?
And then there was ninety-six uh, units remaining throughout the.
Throughout the holes.
But this, this Mike mentioned, do you, could you do it just for? Is it the overall total or do you wanna assign there is? Cause what if they, what if they do it denser in these than what we've shown, you know? Then you wouldn't have.
We could do overall, can we do with overall what?
In the buildable areas in the upper tier?
I think that, that's, it's getting, it's getting a little trickier to start to, like I said, some of them, some of them come down to product and product type and.
Well, I mean, for the purpose of the growth.
Well, it was like an overall thing for the whole property.
Yeah, if we had an overall, if we had an overall, look, we're expecting or projecting or having a goal of. Three hundred houses. We expect this area to be, uh, zone A is gonna have a higher density. You know, you know, the highest density developments of this character, probably multi-story buildings. And then Pod B up where the sledding hill is, this is gonna probably have, you know, a medium density. Closest to these things here and then lower, lower. The goal, but with a goal of having approximately three hundred housing units throughout the site. Vague enough that if a developer wants to come in and propose a little more, a little less, we're not naming them down.
But that's what we need for the growth center application, so.
Yes, with them, we need to be like, well, up here, we can expect, you know. One to two-story buildings. If you're like, I don't really want big buildings up here, then we say, these are one to two or one to three-story buildings.
Do we need to say that? On the site. In these buildable, it's, you know, distributed through these buildable areas.
Says depicting the size and placement of buildings.
The little, that was a little bit of files, like the size, we're talking about, these are.
Buildings may include up to buildings up to five stories in some area.
So it does say in the municipal plan, but.
Or.
What's the difference between municipal plan and city?
And for the RFP, we may need to be more specific. For the growth, it can be. Three hundred housing up to five stories in some areas.
Mike, do you feel like that that is sufficient right there? Three hundred units of housing in the entire project with some, with some area, uh, five-story buildings in some areas?
Up to.
Yeah, I mean, like I said, if you guys wanna put together something, I like where you're going. Put something together, work with them, put something together. I will run that by the folks up in public estate. And go through and say, this is where, you know, I, I know Jake and I just run it by him both and say, hey, this is where we're going. If we need to make more adjustments to this, well, we can either warn another subcommittee meeting or we can have this conversation had council. Go through and say, let's.
We just wanna make sure that we depict the size and placement of the building and that it's envisioned in the municipal plan, which is the full point is to have this adopted as part of the city plan.
So. Are you too comfortable with this idea of, again, the road we're good with, but like the highest density area? Is going to be here, whatever the form that looks like.
Need to do that now.
We don't.
I'm, I don't see a need to do that now.
You wanna like make this open that you could have five-story buildings.
I'm just saying, I don't see a need to do it now, so. We, you know, we're, I'm anticipating additional planning. I don't wanna go into additional planning thing. Oh, yeah, we've decided on five-story buildings here. It's like, why are we doing this additional planning?
Well, I feel like we went through a public process, right? Where concept A was the process that like.
And I went through the process, and I didn't, I was surprised, I was surprised at this, no, I was surprised at this, I didn't think that, I read the result. I didn't think it's what the result said.
I just wanna make sure that our growth application, growth center application gets approved.
But I also understand the need to base and. Um, again, I'm, I'm going with the, let's keep it.
Yep.
High level, and high level is three hundred units up to five-story in some areas.
If that's, if that's.
Really high level.
If that's sufficient to get us to the growth center designation, I'm fine with that.
Good.
I just think we have to sit in the growth center application, we gotta make sure. I mean, Mike can go and check on this, but we have to depict the size and placement of buildings. Like, we have to keep that in mind, because if we're too vague, that might be like, no. So I think that we have to just make sure we get clarification of the depiction of the size and the placement.
And Mike nor Jake can speak for the board.
Understood.
Yeah.
Right, but, so Mike will, will probably come closer to them, and I'll have to flag it and. We'll have to duke it out when we get Mike's draft, here.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure we're not too vague in our narrative, because.
To be clear, I think we should be saying, this is the highest density area, and if there's going to be buildings up to five stories, it was most likely going to be here. And then we're going to.
I'm happy with most likely, I'm not, I'm unhappy with.
Shall be.
Shall be.
I think we should say most likely.
Right, and then this upper.
I think it's zone one, zone two, zone three, and you give the description of most likely.
How's that sound?
Most likely is fine with.
All right.
Fantastic.
We did it. So a zone one, high density, most likely. Multi-story buildings, zone two, most likely.
Less density than.
Less density than one, and we can write the number of anticipated.
When we say most likely, what are we saying? Most likely duplexes, triplexes, townhomes, or any mixture? Types that would get us in this ballpark of this.
Number.
We're talking about three hundred, we're, we're going with a single number for the whole site, three hundred.
Okay, okay, okay.
And then zone three is. The less dense of all three zones and that we're.
Are we specifying zone by zone?
We're just making that up.
For the site.
We're not putting numbers, but we're saying this.
Yeah.
Three hundred for the site, most dense, less dense, least dense.
Cause we do need to depict the size and placement of the buildings.
Yeah, that's.
I think that, I think that.
That's too much?
Why, why, why is this more dense than that's, it's the same.
That's kind of the same thing.
Same thing, great, okay, medium density, medium density.
Medium dense.
So I, I mean, that is a specification we don't, we do not need to look for the.
Well, just in terms of like sizing placement.
Yeah, most likely.
Okay.
We'd leave it there and just.
Cause the design of the buildings will come through when we do the RFP and all those.
The TIF is gonna require more specification, but I don't wanna go into an additional planning, whatever we do for additional planning.
Yes.
With a preconceived notion, or with the. That would make it hard to get the conversation.
Cause these are buildable.
Areas.
Air units.
Areas.
What do we say? This is buildable areas, and that is what we're focusing on, because we can't build in wetlands, we can't build on whatever, so these are the areas. They're really clearly zoned out.
Very clear.
But we're not going to dictate.
No.
The number or necessarily the building type.
But we understand what most likely is going to happen in those buildable areas.
Well, in one of them, I mean. You know that chances, I mean, you're probably not gonna build five-story buildings up here, I can grant you that, but we don't have to build them here if we need it.
All right.
They'll probably.
Yes, yep.
We can use the, other words, you know, one to two, sorry, potentially three in the.
Most likely.
Yeah, but, you know, most likely is down there, potentially is up here, you know, you can use a lot of words that don't nail you down.
Yes, and we don't.
Yeah, so you're, you're.
Until we get concrete.
Yes.
Who?
Yeah, about twenty-four square. Yeah, I hear you, it's all the class.
Okay, so let's just make sure that what we.
Yeah.
So a concept plan depicting the character of the streets, we got the streets and public spaces, but we have public spaces. Depicting the size and placement of buildings and envisioned in the municipal plan, so the whole purpose of this is to adopt it as part of the city plan, so we. Got the size and placement. Feel like that, check that out.
Yeah, size lives on both sides.
I was gonna say.
And then existing and planned public facilities, including public buildings, public spaces, wastewater.
Where this is, this is part of the.
This, this is for the growth center application. Okay, so we feel like this is good, we'll adopt, well, we'll propose this to council.
We're gonna be, I think we're gonna see what comes back for a subcommittee, well, yeah, right?
Most likely.
Yeah.
I don't know if there are gonna be other pieces in there, maybe something. Think about what you wanna add in, like I said, I threw in a couple of those things, if we wanted to do it by the memo approach, here's a memo. You know, recommending a proven plan with. And here's, you know, one is. Whatever, or just keeping it general and, and adding in enough flexibility into a general statement.
I mean, what we're looking, right, the deliverable is.
A map.
A map.
New map.
Right, with buildable areas, and then an accompanying memo that outlines what we've come to. The common understanding that we have just developed.
Right, you had in the street natural resource restriction that have with it.
Yes, and not the map has to do with it.
Yeah, that's all gotta be on that.
Yeah, you'd have it on both, I'd give them one.
The elements of that narrative are.
That we're providing, uh, while we anticipate these number of units in the buildable areas. We wanna remain open and flexible to look at different ways achieving those, although we understand most likely. You know, in this higher-density area, we might see buildings up to five stories in the less dense area or the medium-dense area. We might see a, a mix of housing types, uh, of up to three stories, or, I don't know, two or three stories.
Yeah, what these were envisioned as, was probably two on the front side, three on the town side.
Okay.
They have walkouts?
Yeah.
Did you then wanna take a shot at just writing some bullets down and sending them?
Yeah, that's, that's what I'm trying, yeah, that's what I'm trying to collect.
Do you want that right now, Mike?
Uh, no, I mean, Mike, we can have, we're, we're not under, under the gun for the fourteen, we're.
Right.
Yeah, it's gonna go to the twenty-eight.
So, you guys want to get a drawing back from DHB? And have another meeting where we sit down with a memo and a picture and say, okay, we're, we like this.
Our process, we'll send you back a draft to make sure we've captured what we heard here, you respond to it, and then. Draft map or memo? A draft. Man, yeah, 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 a draft plan, right, I would suggest that maybe we actually hold off. We've captured the main points of the memo, but we wait until we get the draft back of the map, because it's gonna be really accompanying. Next week? You get things done.
It's unlike.
What about Monday? Yeah, no, that'd be fine, if it was next week, then we could, yeah, but, yeah, that's fine, let's wait till we get the map.
And we can't.
Meantime, I, I'll work on a list, or send to you guys.
Well, I, here's the, I wanna ask the process question, because like, we, you know, like, I could write a draft, you could write a draft, but we can't circulate it. Can we circulate a draft outside of a public meeting?
No, that's why I was like, if you guys wanted to go and get me stuff and send it to me, I can put it together for the next, for the next meeting, so we'll have. A new draft map.
So we individually send you. Pile of bullets that you.
Yeah, your caveat list, I, I would approve the plan, the.
With the, with the new map.
With the new map, and these, these are caveats on it, and as I said, they can be general, as in. We reserve the right to do a different process that we recognize, you know, like I put in there, or they can be very specific, we, we wanna make sure. Everybody's aware that we may allow some family.
And then that wouldn't necessarily come back to the subcommittee, that would.
I think we'd come back to the subcommittee.
We'd have one more subcommittee.
Yeah, if you're already having a meeting to look at the last map, maybe you look the last.
And so, we look at that draft.
Yeah, yeah.
We tweak it if we need to, and then, that's, and then we, we take a vote on agreeing, that's what we present.
And I bet like in the next meeting, I think, I think you should write a memo, you should write a memo, I'll write a memo, we'll all send them to Mike. And he can, he can, he can put it in chat GPT and see what it comes up with, and then, and then I, I literally think in the next subcommittee meeting. If we need to wordsworth it, with wordsworth it, we can do it, you know? So we'll have the draft map, we'll have the draft memo, that's a compilation, whatever ideas we sent to Mike. And then we'll find to both of them with the goal of being like, yeah, we're in the place that we want, we're gonna bring this as a recommendation to council on the twenty-eighth.
Yeah.
And Mike, on the final plan, should we be identifying the, the boundary for this parcel as the expanded. Growth center, or should we identify that on this plan? Cause your current growth center stops to where.
Yeah. Wouldn't, wouldn't hurt to certainly label that. The, the, that, you know, the neighboring parcel, edge of, edge of current growth center. I don't think it needs to be in the concept plan to say this is proposed. Be in the city plan, it will be in our application. Actually in the plan, as we say, we're gonna, we approved the actionable plan, it talks about doing growth center.
You don't need to approve the actionable plan, if you got a new memo and map.
The memo and map go in the actual plan.
Contradictory to the actual.
Yeah, no, I understand what you're saying.
But they've got, that's what the caveats are for, that's whatever.
Oh, is, is the phase two design part of your memo?
That goes back to why we.
We'll see.
Process we did.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I feel like the phase two design, I mean, that will be through.
What we're doing is trying to get growth center application application, that doesn't necessarily have to include phase two design.
I think it's futile.
I hear you.
Yeah. I think this is. Process, taking it step by step, but still looking ahead, to make sure that we're not missing any steps. Cause in the end, we want, we wanna build some houses, that's what we wanna do.
And what are we doing in the meantime?
We're going through the process.
I hope we don't have to worry.
Yeah.
You can't predict the future.
Yeah, my buddy, he's a developer out in Denver, and he's just finishing their. People are moving in, it's a sixty-four million dollar project out there, and he said he's just locking up land right now, it's a ten million dollar parcel that a church owns. They're gonna sell it to him for a dollar, he said, even at that, it currently doesn't pencil out, so he said, we're sitting, we're gonna lock that up for four years. Knowing that probably in four years, it'll work, or hope that it will work.
Maybe in four years.
That's why we, yeah, but it could be a partnership, someone could come in and say, hey, we've got, you know.
Yes, and we're exploring that, so.
Yeah, exactly, so, there's any number of possibilities.
Well, and what's the, I mean, we also have the CBDG disaster relief funding that's gonna be coming available for the state for housing projects. We assume that.
That's where, that's why it needs to be on the plan too.
Yep.
And I hear nothing. All right, well, the growth center is the name.
That's right.
So, get me that, and we'll look for stuff, and then we'll set up a meeting when we think we've got everything, we'll set up another quick meeting.
So do you have a date that you need that?
By.
Do it by Monday?
Cause it's Mother's Day and I'm going away.
Okay.
To a spa. I'm getting pampered.
But what about end of the day on Monday?
Okay, thank you, I'll work on it on Monday.
Yeah, I mean, I won't, I mean, the reality is, I've got, uh, planning commission Tuesday night, my Monday meeting, my Monday planning commission. That moves Tuesday.
Okay.
So a lot of my Monday is gonna be tied up with, uh, getting zoning, that, that quick zoning amendment put together, so. Uh, chances are good, if I didn't get it till Tuesday, I'm still good, you guys wanna give yourselves a.
Thank you for that.
Bigger deadline.
And then when do we wanna meet again? Should we set a date for another meeting?
That would be actually really helpful.
Cause I need to, I work, I live by my calendar, I can't, because we, if we're working backwards, right, so we wanna have this. Presented by city council May twenty-eighth.
Yes.
And then we have to put it in the agenda.
And if we need amendments, we need to give.
Bye.
DHB some time to make them.
So we need to get it submitted by the twenty-first. And if we, oh my god.
We don't, we don't, we don't have much.
We don't have much time, so. Yeah, I think maybe end of next week.
But that would be.
Because we have to get the, the agenda items.
When?
The twenty-first, for the meeting on the twenty-eighth.
I could meet the sixteen.
Okay.
I, I, it would have to be later in the game.
That's fine with me, I mean, it's your working steps.
I can meet anytime after, oh wait, I always change that meeting, um, one thirty to two thirty, so I need to, I'll be. Anytime after like two thirty.
Yeah, I can do that.
You wanna meet at like three?
Mike, I'd rather meet at two thirty, it'd be good.
My meeting ends at two thirty, but I'll be in town.
We can do three, let's do three.
I'll be like right here somewhere.
We're just gonna work super efficiently, two forty-five.
Two forty-five, just to give you time to walk.
Okay, great.
Okay, is that, okay?
Just let's run that back, so two forty-five on a week from today.
The sixteen.
And by that time, we will have sent, Mike, our individual memos, you folks are gonna be working on the map. So when we meet on Friday, we'll have both the consolidated memo and a draft map to look at, maybe it's all perfect, and we're like, this is great, and that's what'll go to council. If it's not, we're going to make amendments to it, if we, we'd have to have that done before Wednesday if we wanna make the twenty-eighth.
Yes, correct.
So if we have to.
Yeah, we would need to do that.
Either nineteenth or twentieth, but we should be able to get it.
Not on the spot.
Okay. Um, okay.
Does that work for you all in terms of getting the map back?
Yeah.
And then Mike, that works for you?
So you'll send that to Mike, he'll send that to us.
Okay.
And then Mike can take the draft map, you could actually, I guess, run with it and see if it meets the merits of.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Really appreciate you. I know we're paying you, but I really appreciate you being here, uh, it's very helpful.
We like, important projects for.
This is a really important one.
Where's that money coming from?
You didn't get your bill this week already?
Okay, uh.
Anything else?
Do I hear a move, a move, motion to adjourn or?
I moved to adjourn.